Mr. Coogan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hatzler? Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Here.
Mayor Carrera?
Here. Now let's close the flag.
To the flag, the United States, America, to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have anyone signed up for public input, citizen input this evening, and we do have a number of excellent recognition awards, thirty-three recognition awards to hand out, which is why we have an audience. Usually we don't have an audience, but it's nice to see some really amazing people who are retiring, and we thank you for the years, the many years of service. My grandmother was a teacher in the district. She taught at Talbot for many years, and I still talk to her about it, so I understand the commitment you have to children in this community, and we really thank you, and we're happy and honored to recognize you with this very small token of appreciation this evening. Yep, we'll go down and we'll pass out the awards.
Well, thank you very much. Before we begin with passing out the awards, I'm going to call upon Superintendent Malone to say a few words about our retirees in general. Thank you.
So it's this time of year that, it's a sad time of year for most of us, saying goodbye to folks who have been colleagues and friends for many years. Retirement is an emotional time. You've given your life and your career to really work in the Fall River Public Schools, and when you retire, it's a tough decision to make. But we want all our retirees to know that we're still going to be here, and we're going to still need your help. And what I mean by that is, this institution was forged through your blood, sweat, and tears, if you will, your efforts, your commitment, your core values is what made us who we are today. And the continuity of that, growing our district forward, is really going to be a testament to what you built, and then how we go along now and take those exemplars of professional practice and move them forward. We have several people here tonight retiring with over thirty years of service, which is incredible. That that service has been to, a public service to children in the city is something that is probably the most honorable and admirable profession or endeavor that one can have, to serve. We've talked about service and what that means. To serve is to love. To serve is to be a teammate. To serve is to be a friend. To serve is to go beyond your own self-interest in the spirit of the public good. And that's what we do in our school system here. And your exemplar, your model, your work is something that I think has really been a testament to the core values that I've seen in this district. It is a district that is a family. It's a district that's focused on the right things. It's a district that supports each other, and it's a district that also believes in collegiality. And not many places can say that. You can go to a million different school systems across Massachusetts and not see the type of esprit de corps, the type of love and compassion, the type of teammatehood, if you will, I'll make up a term, really about the work that we do. So with that, every year when I say goodbye to folks, I say, it's not a goodbye, because again, we're going to be here, and I'm going to want you to stick around and continue to help us move forward. But it is a sad moment in time. We stop, we pause, we reflect. We have some nice awards here to give tonight, but that doesn't nearly accomplish all that we have to say to you. So we're going to give you an award and we recognize you, but really, at the end of the day, words can't describe how thankful we are for your work with children in this school system. It is the most important work we do as a nation, and you committed your life to doing that. No one ever gets rich in this work, and no one ever says thank you. But there's always that one moment when thirty years from now, or five years from now at the supermarket where some kid says, "You were my favorite teacher." And that's all the thanks you're ever going to need. And that doesn't happen every day. So today, we're here to say thank you from us to you for all that you've done, after all that you will continue to do. And with that, I'll turn it back over to School Committee, remember Agia. Thank you.
So this is a busy time of year, and we do have thirty-three people that are retiring in the district. Unfortunately, a good number of them are not able to make it today. They might actually be here if they didn't respond. So what I'm going to do to start off with is if we can just hold our applause until the end, I'm going to read off those that I do not think are coming. If you happen to be here, please, you know, come down and join us. And at the end, we'll announce those that are here for sure that told us they were going to be here. So as Superintendent Malone said, we want to thank you for your service to the Fall River Public Schools. First, for two years of service is Albert Afonso, special ed teacher at Cus Middle School. Next, three years, John Ferreira, science teacher at Derfi High School. Eleven years, Kimberly Hicks, math interventionist, Talbot Middle School. Eleven years, Cindy Carrero, a nurse at Sylvia Elementary School. Thirteen years, Cynthia Lima, school nurse. Seventeen years, Kathleen Murphy-Silvera, school nurse. Eighteen years, Donna Freitas, paraprofessional, Derfi High School. Nineteen years, Patricia Fitter, a district nurse. Nineteen years, Barbara Rosendies, pre-K paraprofessional, Sylvia Elementary School. Also nineteen years, Virginia Revard, English teacher, Derfi High School. Twenty years, Deborah Maderas, office paraprofessional, Green Elementary School. Also twenty years, Elizabeth Gustafson, social studies teacher, Derfi High School. Twenty-two years, Kevin Bouchard, teacher, Resiliency Preparatory Academy. Twenty-three years, Margaret Olivera, teacher, Spencer Borden Elementary School. Twenty-four years, Caroline Pereira, special education teacher, Stone School. Twenty-five years, Rebecca Ivanson, paraprofessional, Henry Lord Community School. Janet Coelho, twenty-five years, social studies teacher, Cus Middle School. Also twenty-five years, Dennis Barrowby, district assistant storekeeper. Thirty-one years, Frances Stankiewicz, custodian, Henry Lord Community School. Also thirty-one years, Cheryl McMahon, paraprofessional, Green Elementary School. Thirty-one years, Mary Zima, music teacher, Fall River Public Schools. Thirty-two years, Tracy White, pre-K teacher, Sylvia Elementary School. Thirty-two years, Teresa Moniz, art teacher, Talbot Middle School. Thirty-two years, Christine Mandeville, art teacher, Morton Middle School. And thirty-five years, Philip Swanson, custodian at Spencer Borden Elementary School. So those folks could not make it, let's get a nice round of applause for their time in service. And we're going to start with the least of the many years, but great years nonetheless. So we want to say thank you for your twenty years of service to Patricia Carol Souza, third grade teacher, Green Elementary School. Let's get a nice round of applause for her. Let's get another round of applause for Patricia Carol Souza. Thank you. And for twenty years of service, Derek Frank, custodian, Viveris Elementary School. Another round of applause for Derek Frank. Thank you. Next up, we have for twenty-five years, clerk at Morton Middle School, Kathleen Reposa. One more round of applause, please, for Kathleen Reposa. Thank you. Next up, for twenty-seven years, as a clerk in the early childhood department, Mary Ellen Mitchell. I don't see her here, so we'll give that to her. Next up, for thirty-one years, second grade teacher at the Doran Community School, Eileen Pacheco. And she just announced to me that it's actually thirty-four years, so I hope you were getting paid all those years. We got a nice round of applause for Eileen Pacheco. And next, thirty-one years as a clerk in the Parent and Community Engagement Center, Deborah Manchester. One more round of applause, please, for Deborah Manchester. This next individual has been around for thirty-two years in the district, and I just got word today that not only has he been here thirty-two years, he's been here every day for thirty-two years, never calling out sick. What a tremendous dedication. This gentleman's a great person. We're going to miss him in the school department. And for thirty-two years of service in the district tech support, Douglas Brad Silva. Another nice round of applause for Douglas Brad Silva. And the last award for thirty-three years of service, as a director of early childhood education in Fall River, Barbara Allard. And I don't see her here, but we... So something came up, she couldn't make it, but we will make sure we get all of these to each person that was here. I want to thank you for your attention, and thank you for your service to each and every one of the people that are retiring today. Thank you all.
All right, wonderful presentation. Okay, we're going to continue with the agenda. At this time, we'll have the superintendent's report.
Very briefly, the Derfi Construction Project continues. The construction cam now is up and operational. You can go online and watch the construction from your living room if you want. It is, we're almost completing the entirety of the foundation work, and soon will be the putting up of the steel. So I want to say that within the next month, you're going to see one, two stories above Elsbury Street, ending up to the third floor and the roof as we start to frame and get the school totally buttoned up. In addition to amazing work being done at the construction, we also, last Friday night, had Derfi graduation. We graduated about, Matty, correct me if I'm wrong, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven students, give or take, on Friday night, and it was an amazing ceremony. We, probably the best speeches I ever heard, in terms of the student speeches that night. They were stellar. And it was another beautiful ceremony. Gets a little hot in there, but it was wonderful. So I want to thank everyone who had a role in putting together that amazing graduation, and look forward to next year's classes, junior classes moving up to the senior years. Going to be another great group of kids, and looking forward to having a lot of fun with them. And, you know, we, our student rep, Kyle Nevs, gave a great speech that night as well, and I think we're going to be seeing a lot of him down the road here in the city of Fall River. Finally, the end-of-year update, if you can believe, this Friday is the last regular day of school for, for pretty much, well, for every single building except for Tanzi, whose last day will be on Monday because they had one day to make up. And I really want to just, I can't believe how fast this year went by. Amazing that time flies when you're having fun. And we're having a lot of fun in the district, so that's something I think that's noteworthy, and I just want to thank everyone for all their efforts and look forward to continuing that work into next year. So with that, that ends my superintendent's report.
Yeah, I just, the Derfi graduation was recent, but I do know that we were at the RPA graduation here as well, and I think that was another hundred students, so I just want to give kudos to those folks for doing a great job as well. And thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
I don't find any other place in the agenda for this. It is related to the new construction for Derfi High School, however, the superintendent's not included in the, in his report. I saw the video of the new school. It's a beautiful building. Questions, two questions that I have. One, will there be student lockers in that building?
Good question. I don't believe that there is, Mr. Martins. The, what has been determined is that no one uses lockers. There'll be lockers in the locker room for changing at PE and sports, but there will not be student lockers in the hallways.
Where do people, the students, put their jackets? Carry them around with them, especially in the wintertime?
Yes.
Carry them around from period to period to period along with books?
It's what they do now, Mr. Martins. Like, no one, pretty much no one uses lockers at Derfi now. There's a lot of locker, uses wasted space.
Well, it's not a matter of what they're doing now. It's a matter of what, you know, what is best for the students in there. And I should think that there would be a locker for the students to be able to place their clothing. There's, you know, if you're, when you're going through security checkpoints, you know, that's fine, but you're carrying the winter jacket, carrying your textbooks, just doesn't seem appropriate for a brand-new building, by a scheme.
Well, you are now on the building committee, Mr. Martins, and why don't you raise that question when we have the next building committee meeting?
I shall do that.
Okay.
But the only thing is, the issue is the, that if there's none on the drawings, initial drawings, then that would require a change order. And I'm not so sure of the process for initiating a change order, if that is necessary. Second item is the pool, pool student showering facilities. Is there a separate facilities for male students and a separate showering facilities for female students?
That's my understanding, Mr. Martins. That's under code.
That there will be two showering facilities, one for boys and one for girls.
In the locker rooms, yes, but there's also the showers they have in the pool area that the kids use just to spray themselves before they dive in.
Well, you know, that's fine, but the change?
Oh, yes.
You know, if it's a matter of, okay, you know, you want to get your swimsuit wet prior to, you know, jumping into the competition, I can understand that. But I will never accept the fact of students changing to go into the pool or coming out of the pool for, you know, the relieving of the chlorine and whatnot, the chemicals in the pool water, to have a unisex showering facility.
I'm explaining to you, Mr. Martins, that that's not in the code. It's going to be one for males and one for females, and then go from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. I yield.
Okay, moving on from the superintendent's report to the student delegate report. Student delegate report tonight. Approve of the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hatzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes. There are a number of travel requests before us this evening. If there are no questions, I'll have a motion to approve all at once.
So moved.
Motion's, motion's been made and seconded?
I'm sorry, are there travel requests?
Travel requests, correct. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hatzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes, we have a number of donations for approval tonight. Is there a motion to approve all donations?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hatzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Carrera?
Yes. And superintendent, can you read the donations, please?
Sure. From the Derfi Hilltopper Athletic Foundation to the Derfi Athletics Department, nine thousand three hundred twenty-nine dollars and sixty cents. From Bristol Community College to Derfi High School, one thousand dollars, one thousand four hundred and nine dollars. From Bay Coast Bank to the Fine and Performing Arts Department, one thousand dollars. From the First Congressional Church to Derfi High School, one thousand dollars. From Bay Coast Bank to Derfi High School, one thousand dollars. From the Derfi Hilltopper Athletic Foundation to Derfi Athletics Department, one thousand dollars. From Stop &amp; Shop A-plus Rewards to Derfi High School, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and fourteen cents. From the Derfi Hilltopper Athletic Foundation to the Derfi Athletics Department, seven hundred, seven hundred thirty-four dollars and thirty-eight cents. From the Eos Foundation to the Luterno Elementary School, five hundred dollars. From Donors Choose to Green Elementary School, an iPad and case worth four hundred and ninety-one dollars. From Gerald K. to the Green Elementary School, two hundred dollars. From an anonymous donor to the Green Elementary School, one hundred and ten dollars. We thank our donators, donators for their philanthropic support.
Thank you. We have a number of contracts for approval this evening. Is there a motion to approve all contracts?
So moved.
Motion to approve all contracts has been made.
Please, you're going too fast. I'm sorry.
I'm going to get to questions, Mr. Martins, in a second.
I'm sorry?
I'm going to get to your question in a second. Let me just go through the, motion has been made and seconded. Questions on the motion? Mr. Martins?
On number five, this is the existing baseball field to a synthetic turf or a natural grass. Which one?
Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. Martins, it's, it's a schematic design and initial work. It's not either-or. It's, it's going to give us both, a design of, a preliminary design on both, and schematic design on both, so that we can make our own decision.
Okay, so this twenty thousand dollars is for design only?
This is design only. This is, this is to look at the current conditions. This is look at drainage and, and come up with preliminary schematic design.
And you get two designs, one, well, priced where?
Price for, price for two designs.
One for synthetic turf.
Exactly.
And turf rather, and the other is natural gas. Grass?
Yes.
Seems quite a, quite a high landscaped for the architect, twenty thousand dollars.
There's a lot of drainage work, so most of this is going to be used up in drainage design. The field is always wet. It's just drying out now after the season's over, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done, preliminary work that needs to be done. We're just trying to get a handle on, on which method would be best, what, what the area is going to support, and just how much work we're going to...
I can understand the, you know, the sense that there's drainage been put on there and whatnot, because it was one of the complaints of having wet?
Yes.
Baseball field in there, but nevertheless, that's additional cost beyond the twenty thousand.
The twenty thousand dollars is strictly?
Design.
Schematic design and, and some engineering, yes.
Are there any other vendors other than Traverse?
Traverse is the, is the current contractor at the high school, doing all the design work, so they already have a lot of backup information that was done for the rest of the school, and that's why we use Traverse.
I see. Thank you very much. I yield.
Other questions? Mr. Agia?
Just one question on the first one, remove and replace roadway, you know, due to the building of the new school. So I think right now we're in a, a good spot financially in the school department, but I had a question on whether that, those type of funds in the past, when we haven't been in that good of financial condition in the schools, that was taken, things like that, or the transportation was taken out of the overall grant or the, the loan order?
For the, for the school construction?
For the new school construction. Is that still an option? I'm not suggesting we do. I mean, right now, we're in a good spot, but is there any talk about articulating what those expenses are?
So, so basically, a lot of the work that we've had done has been through the, through the contract. This road is not going to be touched until 2022. There is a twenty-two-inch water main right under that road and near the Spencer Borden area, which may or may not have work done depending on the water department and, and the testing that they're going to do on that line. So we do not want to put this through the construction project because we don't know if it's going to, to be in there. And it's going to be an ineligible cause no matter what we do, because it's not part of the construction project, but it was, it was looked at, and at this time, it was deemed not part of the construction.
Right. But would all the other expenses still be allowed to go out of the?
Yes.
Loan order?
So we...
Transportation for all the fields that are under moving?
So anything we moved, that currently, we're, we have three security people who direct traffic, who, who work at different entrances to the building due to the construction and the amount of personnel in and out.
And that comes out of the grant, not out of?
Comes out of the grant, yes.
All right. Thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome.
You yield, Mr. Agia?
Yes, I yield.
Mr. Coogan?
I, I got a question, Kenny. I thought when, one of the meetings we were at on the Derfi building, that Peter told us that the drainage work they were doing to set up for the new building would help the baseball field.
It is. So it's ready to accept the drainage from the baseball field. It's ready to accept the drainage from the softball. So some of the work they've done is the infrastructure in between the two fields and in between the two synthetic fields. It's also along the property line. We also have a major chamber, a storm chamber that's going to be put under that first parking lot that hasn't been built yet. to be put under that first parking lot that hasn't been built yet, where the trailer farm is right now. Um, right there, that'll be, um, a, a major piece that will also be part of that drainage in that area, which is going to all deflect all of that water. Right now, that water runs from the Tansy through the, the conservation land, and then it spills onto our property, and it also spills on most of the neighbors. So all of that's being controlled, and eventually, we'll be put into those chambers and taken out to the, um, to the drainage along the Watapa.
I thought, I thought the way you explained it to us was the free, the work they were doing free in those old underground, uh, culverts and streams that were blocked, it was going to be a natural drainage effect on those fields.
So the field, the field itself did not, did not get the benefit of that. Most of the property did.
Okay.
Langley Street was always underwater with every heavy, heavy rainfall. Traffic used to be diverted.
Okay.
And the, and the, uh, brook that ran through into BCC was always overflowing. That stopped.
Okay. The, the second question I have is on the last one, Teach Point and the teacher evaluation. Um, I guess it's soft, software or record-keeping compliance. What is, what do we buy in there? Anybody know?
Good evening. Teach Point is the software which is interactive between the professional staff that gets evaluated according to, uh, D E S E guidelines. So that's the system that accommodates roughly a thousand people, uh, and it creates a dialogue. It also archives all of the, um, evaluation materials. So for instance, if you were an administrator and I were the teacher, you're evaluating me, all that dialogue back and forth between us and the records is all kept within Teach Point. We used to use a, uh, uh, Google Docs format, which was sort of homegrown, uh, in years past, and if you recall, we were in the eighty percent range for evaluations. This has allowed us to increase the number of evaluations, and it's done on a user basis, so...
Does it save time?
It does save time. It does a much better job of record-keeping, uh, and keeping us in compliance.
Okay, thanks.
It's a slight increase from what we spent last year. It's about, roughly two thousand dollars more than we spent last year.
And it'll streamline the evaluation process?
This will be year two with it.
Okay, thanks. I, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If I may ask through the chair that, uh, Mr. Almeida comes to the podium, I just got a question regarding the funding source. Good evening, Mr. Martins.
Good evening.
So in the last two, the tech bid for general supplies as well as Teach Point, that money's coming out of F Y 2020 budget?
Yes, it is.
So what are the regs regarding appropriating money or encumbering money on a budget that hasn't been approved yet?
Well, we've, well, we've done this in the past. Everything's contingent upon the budget approval. Um, but the, the request for the tech bid, that's something we do historically every June. It's in order to get, um, you know, the purchasing power with the other groups, and we've got to join ne- in this year prior to, prior to the following year, next year.
But in terms of, of the process, my understanding has always been that our budget had been approved by that point, and then we were encumbering the money for the following year, or for the following fall, if you will. But are you telling me that we've encumbered money in one fiscal year for a future fiscal year without it being approved, without the budget being approved?
We're requesting your approval now.
Right, and I'd love to give it to you. I just want to make sure I can legally give you permission to spend money in next year's budget when we haven't approved it yet this year.
We've done this in the past. I can tell you that.
It says contingent upon school budget approval. Those two items below that, in that section, are contingent upon school budget approval. So you're, you're getting the authorization, and once the budget is approved, if it is approved in its current form and not reduced, then the administration will have the approval to move forward.
So these two items are, in particular, we need it for, you know, July first, so we try to get your authorization, your approval ahead of time, so...
And in years past, we've done it.
We have, oh, yes.
It's been after our budget's been approved.
One hundred percent, we have, yes.
That's fine. Okay. I yield. Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Okay, we did have a motion, a second, to approve all contracts. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hatzah?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa?
Yes. Discussion item number one, number one is a, uh, presentation and vote to approve or accept, rather, joint labor management presented by the Diversity and Equity Committee. Restaurate, what is this, restorative practices committee, curriculum and assessment committee, special education committee, and English, English learners committee.
Yes. So we'll bring forward, uh, this is Superintendent Anne Dargan and F R E A President Rebecca Cusack, who will begin the presentations. This is, came out of the collective bargaining agreement of, uh, two years ago, where we have joint labor management committees working on five key areas. Uh, tonight, they're presenting their work and recommendations, and I kindly ask that the committee, uh, listen and then, uh, uh, vote to accept, uh, the report, and then we'll figure out down the road as we continue to work on our strategic plan, what things we're going to be able to move the ball down the road on.
Thank you. As Dr. Malone shared, the joint labor management committees were established two years ago, and as part of that agreement, on an annual basis, the five committees will come before the school committee and share progress to date. So you're going to hear not only what their goals were, but some accomplishments, as well as recommendations and next steps this evening. So in your pocket, you have a template that's been, um, formulated, and we're going to hear from diversity and equity first, followed by restorative practices, curriculum assessment, special education, and finally, English language learners. Each committee has been asked to spend, um, no more than five minutes, uh, engaged in a dialogue with you, and we hope that you will find it very informative. So, diversity, come on up.
Hi. My name's Kurt. I'm, uh, the co-chair for the labor side of the committee, and on my left.
I'm Jamil Bayaz.
Good evening.
So do you want to start with the paraprof?
Sure. We, we worked on a number of things this year, and I want to thank my two colleagues here on my left, as well as the other members of the committee for their work this year, uh, on the diversity and equity issues in the, in the district. Uh, one of the, uh, points that I assisted with and, and worked with a number of other people at, uh, the high school is, uh, the workforce program. Um, we enrolled three paraprofessionals of color in the JET program, which supports paras transitioning into teaching careers, and it assists them both financially and with support services to help them. Uh, the para program, uh, is traditionally, uh, the home of about two hundred and fifty of our employees, and it's a much more diverse workforce than our teaching ranks, so this is one way for us to bridge, uh, bridge the issue of, of bringing more diverse workforce forward. Uh, we also developed a pilot mentorship program to prepare Durfee seniors to become paraprofessionals. One of the routes to being a paraprofessional is to pass the Paraprotest, so they would get academic support for that exam, as well as some in-the-field training as volunteers, um, at local schools, and then hopefully, they would be able to transition in and help us fill our para workforce needs going forward. The last is that we suggest revising hiring language to more explicitly affirm the district's communication, I'm sorry, commitment to diversity and equity, and that is still in legal compliance, but it also encourages, um, a rationale for, uh, more diverse candidates to apply for positions.
Okay, in terms of our accomplishments regarding curriculum, uh, we created a Latino Studies and an LGBTQ Studies elective. Um, we created the courses for Durfee. They're launching actually this September, uh, for the school year of nineteen, um, twenty nineteen. We have a hundred and fifty students that have signed up, so we're very excited about that. Uh, we've also inventoried deans at all levels regarding the diversity and equity of the curricula, and we've also facilitated a conversation with educators from across the district regarding the five pillars of effective urban educators.
And then in terms of, uh, of recommendations, an idea that we've been tossing about is picking a theme for the school district to coalesce around, for example, many families, and then facilitating curriculum opportunities, professional development opportunities around that theme each year. So our goal next year is to plan to do that, starting in, um, school year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, as a way to, um, sort of tackle issues of diversity and equity from the top down, from the bottom up, so that K through twelve can all be, you know, working together, um, on one particular issue each year. And another question that we had, or a suggestion that we had, is, uh, to develop protocols for responding to major acts of bias, for example, the antisemitic rave desecration that took place this year, um, just as we have in the crisis response team. Like, if, if what could be, um, tools or systems that are in place that we can go to really quickly, um, for example, like, oh, let's have this kind of response at the high school level or the elementary level. Uh, for example, in morning meeting, could we talk about antisemitism? Just in response to that. Um, and I remember at the mayor's, at the, at the vigil, at the rally, spoke about the need for the public schools to really take a lead in doing that work to, um, conquer bias, so, uh, we're sort of responding to that. Another thing, just as a quick final thing, the student bill of rights. Um, at Durfee, there's this project, Red and Black, where interdisciplinary program where English, math, science, history, uh, teachers come together and work with students on projects that they come up with, and so we pitched to them that maybe students, as one of their projects, could undertake, uh, developing a student bill of rights, and they were excited about that. So our goal is to work with a group of students next year, um, as they, uh, sort of solicit input for that and put that forward, um, and so we can see where that goes from there. Any questions?
Mr. Martins?
Thank you for your presentation. Um, a question that I have, when I reviewed this, uh, in there, and I guess this is more, well, I guess it could be addressed to you three. Um, are you suggesting that the decisions made in this document be carried, uh, with the weight of an approved school committee policy?
I think the, the role of the joint labor management committees is to do the work of discussing and bringing forth these items. It certainly isn't to supersede any school committee policy. Super, the school committee still controls all of, uh, those items by policy. We're here to, uh, discuss, advise, and, and bring forward suggestions for changes to either the way we operate or, or curriculum or any of the other changes that we make here.
Well, that's, you know, that's part of it, because the, uh, uh, curriculum, as I reviewed here, uh, the employment of, uh, a few paraprofessionals, uh, in there, um, this in no way, these are suggestions that you are bringing forward, but in no way is this considered as a fait accompli in that this is school committee policy.
Well, the fir- the first, I don't know exactly what you're referring to, the, the progress and accomplishments, one, two, and three, is stuff that's already happened, and the recommendations and next steps are things that have not happened yet, and are recommendations.
Okay, it's recommendations only?
Right.
Correct? Uh, I just want to get it clear that this is not school committee policy. It's a recommendation that you'd be bringing forward. Uh, while I appreciate your efforts, um, there are certain, uh, items that are here under the authority of the school committee, and, uh, I just don't want any of those relinquished to other groups.
I don't think any of the joint labor management committees that come forward tonight would, would suggest that we're going to exceed any authority, um, of the school committee. That's certainly not our role.
All right. So, uh, well, I'll conclude, but with the understanding that this, this carries no weight with regards to school committee policy. With, unless you've got a change, you're going, you feel free to...
No, I just want to say that that's understood, uh, and that we do hope that in the future, moving forward, that we do have more open dialogue and that we can actually work together on some of these issues. I think the, you know, I believe that that's the case for, uh, all of the, um, committees, that we do hope that moving forward, we're working together in unison, uh, for the benefit of our students and families.
Okay, thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Student delegate, Samaya?
Um, so I know you guys mentioned the idea of a crisis respond, a response team. Um, personally, I really do like that. After the defacing of the, um, Hebrew cemetery, there were a lot of students, they didn't really understand why that was important. Like, I, I heard about them talking about it in my class. I mean, it wasn't really after we had a guest speaker, which is Wendy Garfleip from, you know, uh, she was executive director of United Neighbors, and she came in and she really talked about it and why it matters, and I think that it really helped enlighten our students in not only really history, well, this was in our history class, and so it didn't only relate our history to like what's going on today, but most probably why it's important, why students need to be engaged and really care about it. So if that goes through, I totally support it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next, you're going to hear from, um, the restorative practices committee, of which Rebecca and I co-chair. So while Rebecca introduces the members to you, um, I'm going to ask that my colleagues come down and join us.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here tonight on behalf of the restorative practices committee, and I won't make each committee member come up here, but I'll read their names and just ask them to wave so you know who they are. Um, Dr. Dargan and I co-chair. Uh, we have members Sharon Bab, Ashley Barboza, Kristin Correa, Rebecca Huff, Mary Ellen Shaw, Dr. Jessica Stevens, and Drew Woodward. And the vision statement really summarizes what has guided our work this year, uh, which is to create schools that are focused on building relationships and establishing community while using more restorative practices as alternatives to traditional discipline to resolve conflict and change undesired behavior. And I'm going to turn it over to Kristin Correa to talk a little bit about our long-term goals for this committee.
Hi, thank you. Um, we have three major long-term goals. Our first is to identify and increase early and effective interventions for students with trauma and or high SEL needs. Um, we also would like to train all district staff in SEL practices, whether that's to train the trainer model, or if we bring someone in for some PD down the, down the road, uh, but we think all teachers need to be trained in some SEL strategies and practices. And then our final long-term goal is to replicate the, uh, the culture of our Durfee Freshman Academy, um, by building educator capacity. Um, so some of the data that we looked at was on over four years since freshman academy, academy started, retention, dropout, and the failure rate have all gone down for our, for our freshman class. Um, so we'd like to not only continue that in freshman academy, but roll that up into the sophomore year as well.
Hi. Um, in regards to progress and accomplishments this year, um, we surveyed the district's VPs to gain a more thorough understanding of the current beliefs, knowledge, and needs relative to student conduct and how it's being addressed. Um, we are utilizing the results to create pertinent PD, including a series of video clips that will be used to demonstrate effective use of restorative approaches for current and future employees. Um, we examine the culture and practices currently being implemented in Durfee's Freshman Academy. We invited staff from various schools in the district to share current practices, as well as insight about the needs that are, um, currently present in their schools. Um, we attended and presented at trainings relative to social-emotional learning and restorative practices, and we established, um, collaborative working efforts with various partners such as School and Main.
Good evening. In terms of recommendations for next school year, um, we would recommend to hire a lead school adjustment counselor, and we're very thankful, uh, to the school committee and to the superintendent for its inclusion in that proposed 2020 budget. Um, we also think it's important to assess PD needs and provide ongoing PD, specifically PD that gives teachers and administrators tools and strategies to deal with students presenting difficult behaviors. Um, we think it would be important to implement an SEL curriculum that's K to twelve, so that all schools are marching with the same beat. We're recommending to increase, uh, the embeddedness of SEL needs in common planning time and professional learning, uh, communities, uh, so, uh, strategies can address both academic and socio-emotional needs. We want to continue to monitor our SEL data, our conduct data, and use that to make future recommendations and adjustments in PD and other strategies, and we would also, um, love to invite additional stakeholders to engage in our work, including school to invite additional stakeholders to engage in our work, including school committee members, principals, and other community members.
Mr. Yiel.
Just a question, more of a request. If we could just, I know you said there was some data on what VPs thought about discipline and restorative practices. I'm personally intrigued about what that data looks like. As you know from prior meetings, I always wonder, you know, how we're having, some schools have 800 kids and no suspensions, and I get the idea, but I think a little more data might help us to understand what's going on, so if I could just make that request, and with that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
This document consists of several self-sustaining committees. You're one of them, the people, the young people just earlier was another, and the same question, is this advisory in nature, or do you consider this as, whatever you come up with, as a decision of something? Either you want someone, or you want to change something, that that is not policy, that that is just a recommendation that you bring forward through the proper channels.
All of these committees, Mr. Martins, were formed to address areas that were of importance to the district, and none of them are designed to usurp any authority of the school committee, but just to put forward recommendations based on a collaborative effort that we feel, these are suggestions that will move us forward as a district, so not, none of these committees are going to take any, an attempt to impose policy or anything that's in your purview.
I sincerely appreciate your efforts and your comments. Just that documents sometimes have a way of changing its meaning in there, well, I interpret that to be this, or I interpret that to be something else in there, so that your input is always important, and as far as I'm concerned, we'll always take it into consideration. Doesn't mean I'm going to agree with it, but I'll take it into consideration, and then we can debate the issues in there, but as long as it's advisory in nature and not intended to be a school committee directive or policy. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Krugan?
I just, that's the second time that Mr. Martins told us that, but at the first page of the thing says, "Each committee shall annually make recommendations to the superintendent and make a presentation to the school committee." I don't see anywhere it talks about policy or usurping authority. I, as one member, bring it on. I want more information, like my colleague said here, he likes looking at the data, I want to hear what you have to say. I don't think, I don't think we want to discourage anyone from this practice. Bringing a message to the committee is why every meeting we start with public input, is why we have a committee like you guys doing the hard work. I know every single one of you has something better to do than this, at least I hope you do, but we do, I, for one member, I have no problem with listening to you guys and your presentation, and I know the work that goes into this, and I appreciate it, and I'm not worried about you taking any of my power. Yield.
Thank you.
So next, I'd like to invite Curriculum and Assessment to come up and give you a presentation.
Can you hear me? I'm here with Brenda Boudreau and Dr. Julia Carlson, and I'm from the, and we're from, and Tracy Curly, and we're here from the Curriculum and Assessment Committee. There's been a great deal of curriculum work done this year, but for the sake of time, we're going to keep it short and talk about what we're doing this year with assessment, and what we plan to do next year with curriculum. So this year, we're very happy to hear that the committee has decided to purchase ANET for our district-wide assessment program. We've used that in some schools in this district, and the feedback's been very positive, so we're happy to give that experience to all of our students next year in Math at ELA. Looking forward to next year, we'd like to focus more on curriculum, and we are aware that there are some curriculum lead positions in the budget, and we feel that those positions are essential in making that work happen and collaborating between schools, especially at the middle school and elementary school levels, where we have many schools to work with. So we hope to have those members, individuals, join our team as soon as possible, and thank you for your time this evening. We look forward to continuing to collaborate more in the future. Thank you.
Short and sweet. Questions, comments? Mr. Martins?
Same comment, same question. This is another committee, greatly appreciate that, but also appreciate the comments of my esteemed colleague at the other end of the table, that always take your input, but keep in mind that what you decide, and you feel that, wow, this is best thing since sliced bread, in there, still has to go to the school committee. And with that, if you agree with that, then fine, if you don't, then please say so. You do? Okay, thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Yeah. So for two years, these committees have really pushed the needle to really improve the school system in the five areas that we jointly identified. I think we're the only district in the Commonwealth that has joint labor management committees focused on very serious work. This came out of our negotiations, and we've made several moves within the system based on the feedback that we've received over the last two years from these committees, just in respect for human difference curriculum, the work that we've done around professional development, the work that we're having here with the curriculum leads and the phonics program, and all the things that we've budgeted and really made a part of what we're doing. Not everything, Mr. Martins, is policy, so not everything that we're talking about improving the system needs school committee approval, but we're being fully transparent in this dialogue, and that was what we agreed to, that what Mr. Krugan just said, every year, the committees come together, they work, and then they do a presentation, they come here and do more presentations, so we have full transparency around the directions of things that we're going. This work of these five committees is totally integrated with our overall strategic plan, and how we're going to continue to improve the school system. So I can't tell you how impressed I am with, A, the interest that we've had from all levels of the field, and B, the really deep work, thoughtful, smart work with the recommendations that have come forward, because you're right, you know, we're not going to close the gaps that we have without engaging everyone in the process of what that means, so I'm excited and appreciative, and I tip my hat to you guys and salute you guys, and looking forward to continuing to work with you as we continue to work on improvement.
Thank you. Next committee.
Just two committees left. The next one will be special education.
Hi, I'm Liz Maderas. I'm the co-chair, along with Michael Loesch of the Special Education Committee. I just first want to thank the committee for hearing us out tonight, for hearing our, you know, our input, and for knowing that we're all on the same page here, and we feel passionately about this district, and this is a great opportunity for us to work towards our common goals, okay? So in terms of the Special Education Committee, our long-term goals were around best practices and increasing the understanding and implementation of best practices in teaching and learning throughout the whole district. We want to increase opportunities for all staff to gain knowledge in order to increase and refine professional practice in terms of inclusive, inclusive learning, and we want to increase the frequency and refine modes of communication with community partners, increase and implement communication about curriculum, utilize existing experts within our district, and also maintain and streamline information from the department across the entire district. Our progress that we've made towards goals this year around best practice, we offer professional development based on inclusive practices. This included professional development around what inclusion is, as well as classroom strategies for things like behavior management, sensory regulation, and tracking of behavior. We also, as a group, viewed a documentary called Intelligent Lives about a successful inclusive model within a school system, and this helped us begin a discussion around organizing a community viewing of the film and discussing ways that we can involve the community in that dialogue around inclusive practices. I mentioned some progress we made for professional development. We utilized the district days within the calendar to offer this sort of professional development. And in terms of progress towards our communication goal, we utilize our teacher experts in these PD offerings, and we began to think of ways to involve community partners, and we also met with the Walker Group for the department audit, and began to talk about ways, the current practices that were within the district, as well as the needs in the district related to special ed.
I'm going to briefly summarize the recommendations. A lot of our recommendations going forward are going to come from the Walker Audit and the information they provided to us, where as a group, going to review those and come up with some very concrete plans that we can make going forward. We're going to take those recommendations, and we're going to figure out which are most applicable to the district, as well as our goal is to go observe strong programs in other districts that are using inclusive practice as well, and seeing what ideas we can get from those districts to make sure that we come up with a very strong plan for Fall River in the future. Thank you.
So to build off those recommendations and look at specific next steps, for best practices, we're going to continue to work on organizing a viewing of Intelligent Lives. We're going to analyze a Walker Program Review to determine our areas of strength. We're going to use the recommendations of the Program Review to develop a plan to improve on our areas of growth. We're going to invite different stakeholders into the conversation around inclusion in order to develop a plan to improve inclusion throughout the district. And looking at professional development, we're going to continue to design PD offerings around the areas of need and inclusion. We're going to ensure teacher autonomy in selecting PD courses based on their preferences. In the area of communication, we're going to review the Walker Program Review for recommendations on next steps to increase communication within the department and all stakeholders, and to continue planning around involving community partners in different events, even movie viewing, visiting of other programs, to ensure we have a full range of views represented.
Comments, questions? Mr. Martins?
No. Okay, I appreciate your efforts and your suggestions, but do you concur that what is here is not policy of the school committee, that has to go through the steps in order to become a directive of the school committee?
Yes.
Do you agree? Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. Next committee.
The last committee is English Language Learning.
Good evening. Fernanda Ferracruz, one of the co-chairs of the ELL Joint Labor Management Committee.
Buenas noches. I'm Tyler Ramey, co-chair of the Dual Language Subcommittee.
We do have, we also have other members of the committee who are being shy, so they way back there, but they have done a ton of work this year with us, so we would like to recognize them. Principal Tricia Witty, Celeste Hoag, Sarah Jackson, Kristi, I'm going to butcher it, Malone, who else is here? There's others, but they're not here tonight. This past Friday, as Dr. Malone, the superintendent, mentioned, it was the Durfee High School graduation, and as, like many of you, I was in attendance, and I sat there in awe and very, very proud of Kyle Alves, our student representative, who spoke so eloquently in English and was able to then transition with ease to address his Spanish-speaking classmates and the community. Thank you, Kyle. Tonight, we are here to propose the implementation of a kindergarten Spanish dual-language education program to open doors at Vivera's Elementary in the fall of 2020, so more students, like Kyle, are able to make cross-cultural connections through bilingualism, biliteracy, and multiculturalism. As of today, our English language learners represent 17% of the total population. Through a dual-language program, we are, I'm so short, through a dual-language program, we are able to build students' academic language and content knowledge in both languages simultaneously. Keep going. Last year, we came before you, and you approved our proposal of exploring the possibilities of implementing a dual-language program in Fall River for the first time. Our scholars deserve it. We have about 50, I think around 50, dual-language programs through Massachusetts, throughout Massachusetts, and our Fall River students also deserve the opportunity. We have done a ton of work since you last approved that we continue the exploration, including applying and being awarded a $250,000 grant to explore and hopefully plan and implement this program.
So over the last year, our Subcommittee has been extremely mindful in the work that we've completed in order to make sure that we're very well-prepared and planned to bring such an amazing program into the city of Fall River. Some of the things that we have done have included visiting some of those existing dual-language programs throughout the state. We've also attended professional development and some conferences that have been put on by MABE, which is the Multi-State Association for Bilingual Education, and those, that's really the experts in the area, so we have been using them as a resource and a guide, and they've been very influential in helping us to guide our research and investigations in order to make sure that what we're doing is the right thing. Most recently, on May 22nd, we had some committee members in attendance of an information session that we had. The executive director of MABE was in attendance, and in collaboration with her, we really took an in-depth look at all of the research and the preparation work that we've been doing in order to make this recommendation with school committee approval for fall of 2020. If I can direct your attention to the second page, the second side of the one-sheeter, you're going to see some of the graphics that we have there to, that have, that we talked about during our presentation, and the bottom graphic here, I think, is the most powerful one. If you can see the trajectory of the program models, that model there is the two-way dual-language program, looking at the progress, students' growth in all academic areas through that model. We are, we did also share that the reason that we are proposing Spanish as the language for opening doors in 2020 is that we currently have 64% of our English learners in the city of Fall River are Spanish-speaking students, so we're really looking at how best to meet the needs of the students and the community in Fall River.
Was that the conclusion of the presentation?
Well, it could be. I was just going to, I was just going to share our next steps, which is on the one page, if you approve that we continue this work. So like we said, we've done a ton of work, and some of the things that we will look for next year, the next steps, is to really, obviously with your approval, to identify instructional resources for the dual-language, fund professional development for dual-language instruction, attend the summer of 2019 MABE Conference, which we've registered, what else? Oh, provide PD during the whole school year of 2019, just to start prepping, prepping the teachers and staff, and then do a community outreach for the head and staff, and then do a community outreach for the Head Star students, and continue to have ongoing information sessions with parents and the community at large. And then we would use a lottery for student placement, if approved, for spring 2020, and then hopefully have a wonderful, a great family and student orientation before opening doors.
Mr. Teixeira?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
A few questions. So how many students are we looking to enroll in this program? I'm very excited about the program, by the way.
So the model that we're looking at is a 50-50 model, so that would be two classrooms of about 25 students in each, so 50 students in that grade level.
So we're just going to roll it out one grade level at a time?
One grade level at a time.
So build the program up from K?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
So the plan is to roll one grade level at a time, starting with Spanish, and then the next year add another grade and another language. So we would then start a Portuguese dual-language program and start building. Yes. Slow down. Yeah, that's the plan.
So when these students get to the fifth grade, they should be bilingual, basically. So, and this is for English-speaking students, they start there, and by the time that child gets to fifth grade, they can speak English and Portuguese, English and Spanish. That's excellent. That's wonderful.
It's biliterate and bilingual, so not only speaking the language, but also being completely literate in the second language as well.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you. I think you answered my question that I brought forth to all the other committees in there when you mentioned about the approval of the school committee. I enjoyed your presentation the other day with regards, that was at the Edmond Building in there, and I belong to another organization that is exploring the financial assistance for dual-language learning in there. I won't go into what that organization is, but perhaps if you could, a piece of paper, just jot down where I can be in contact with you, and I'll turn that over to the president of that organization, and if you're really interested in dual-language learning to financially support such, that just a couple people that you can be in contact with are invited to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I yield.
Obrigada. I have my card.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank you to all the committees. Give them a round of applause.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Motion to accept?
Motion to accept has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded? I mean, we can do a roll call, but we don't need one of that. But roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know about number two. Is it a presentation, Coaching for Change?
So I'm bringing forward Mr. Marquis Taylor, who is the head of the Coaching for Change Program, which came to us two years ago in a planning phase to try to do some extended learning on the south side of the city, partnering with Henry Lord. From that initial programming to do extended learning, we've grown to realize that really this program isn't just an extended learning program, it's also a human capital multiplier that now several of the young adults from UMass Dartmouth now want to go into teaching or starting as apparel, whatever it is, to get their foot in the door. And this has been very exciting. I've watched the program grow. We're actually looking to expand next year also with the Talbot as part of their school redesign grant proposal, was extending the time there as well through Coaching for Change. So with that, I know that there's been questions about what does Coaching for Change do? I wanted to bring Marquis forward to the committee to answer any questions and tell us a little bit about what goes on.
Definitely. So thank you for this opportunity, and this year's been really interesting and exciting. We use a tiered mentoring model where Derby High School students and UMass Dartmouth students are going to Henry Lord and running after-school programs for seventh and eighth graders. And during the after-school program, they're receiving snacks, they are playing in the gym, and they're also building businesses. And so in the first semester, they built shoe businesses where they designed not only shoes and created mission statements and logos, but they also created commercials and wrote sponsorship letters to Shaq and Will Smith. And in the second semester, they created food trucks, a food truck business, where they understood pricing, they understood how to design their food truck, and also they had an opportunity to cook their food in the school in their kitchen. And so what we've learned on the middle school side is that we're creating fun learning atmosphere after school, which really engages young people and helps them feel more connected. At the high school and college level, we're beginning to expose young people to education. What does it mean to be a teacher? What does it mean to really just flip the script? Right? So we're oftentimes teaching at students but not giving them the opportunity to lead a classroom. And our high school and college students are leading small groups of eight students at a time. And we're specifically targeting, at the college level, education majors and non-education majors. Because what we know is that, as one of the committees mentioned before, our teacher population doesn't match our student body population. And if we look at the teacher prep program or the teacher prep pipeline, a large majority are white women. Nothing wrong with that, but it just doesn't replicate the student body that we're working with. And so we're going into social work, undecided majors, business management, trying to recruit college students that have never really thought about education, allowing them to experience it differently. And so this year at Henry Lord, they hired three long-term subs who came in and worked as subs this year, and potentially one teacher who might be getting hired next year as a full-time teacher. So this is where this becomes a really tiered mentoring model, but it also allows the district to begin thinking about using after-school time as a way of building a future teacher pipeline. I'd love to open it up for questions.
Mr. Aguirre?
So thank you for your presentation. I am aware, as you know, of the program prior to you coming here. I do think it's a great program. You do great work, and you're working hard on your foundation to raise some funds, and it's a partnership that we have, so I do appreciate that. I have heard about the Henry Lord program, that you've definitely made a difference there, and I, for one member, am in favor of expanding. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Thank you. I give them a round of applause, too. Okay. Next item is a discussion and vote to approve the request to pilot the D4 attendance policy at Derby High School. Are there any questions on this, or are you ready to approve? You have some questions? Principal Mazzie Damaris will come down and answer our questions.
Good evening.
He's a rock star at graduation. Good job.
I think we all were. The kids were, most of them.
Definitely. Questions? Mr. Aguirre? Oh, student delegate. Go ahead.
Okay, I thought we were just going to hear a presentation, but it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do.
You got it. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Damaris. Could you just explain it? Because I mean, I go to Derby, and I know about the F6 policy, so is this basically the same thing?
Yes. So basically, we, right now, if you are absent six times or more unexcused in a term and you're passing otherwise, your grade is moved to a 64, and you fail for the term. What happens when we tell a student, you now have an F, unfortunately, is that they begin to become demotivated, they become to maybe even miss some more school. So that was an issue. Students that are chronically absent and absent 10, 15 more absences a term, they're probably going to fail, they're probably failing anyway. This policy really only seems to affect the students that, right now, are caring about their grades and also willing to adhere to a policy. You follow me? The problem is, is that the policy is set up right now so that the student, their grade may never be affected because, let's say, they're absent five times a term. The policy's never going to come into play, they're going to get the grade they earned, but the state still looks at them as chronically absent. So we're looking at changing the policy in two ways. Taking the penalty and moving it from an F to a D so that hopefully we take some of the psychological factor out where the students give up, and taking the number and moving it from a six to a four so that if the student was concerned with the policy and concerned with their grade, they would not exceed the 18 absences that the state tags you at chronic.
So would this replace the F6 policy?
We are asking the committee to pilot this, to take a look at it, so we can start to compare some data.
For one year, to come back to the committee with comparative data, to continue the discussion about where do we want to go long-term with our entire strategy around absenteeism at the high school level. And I know that there was a question earlier in the day on the last notation about alternative schools, and Drew corrected the language in that, in that the alternative high school will not be following this policy that Derby's doing, but will be doing much more restorative practices that they're learning through their other redesign work.
Mr. Costa?
Vice Chair?
Thank you. Mr. Damaris? Is this proposed pilot policy in a program of studies?
Is it? No. This is, putting this before you as a request to pilot. It would be, I'm sorry.
If it does garner the support this evening to move forward with it, how is it going to be communicated to parents and students?
It would be put into next school year's student handbook, and then it would also be reviewed. We could do workshops with parents as well.
For school year 1920?
Correct.
And so how are you planning on rolling that out to students who, I'm guessing after Friday, are no longer going to be in your building?
Each year, when students return. Now it's late August. We have opening assemblies.
So you'll be handing out these program studies beginning of next year?
The student handbook.
The student handbook. And you're going to, you'll swap out the F6 with this policy for that one year? The thing that always, you know, concerned me about the state's requirement of 18 is that they account for both excused and unexcused. And so you may have a student who's got a number of medical issues that despite being seen by a medical professional and having a note, still get lumped into being chronically absent in the state's eyes.
Correct.
This isn't going to change that, obviously, because the state regs are what they are. I'm willing to support, because I think, I agree with you. When you approach a student, and maybe they've had a couple of medical issues that caused them to miss, and you approach them and you explain to them that they're going to get an F for that, if they were an otherwise B student, what's the incentive after I get informed of getting an F6 to come? And if I do show up, what's the incentive to participate? Because I know what my grade's going to be anyway. So I like the concept of trying to capture some of those students who are really concerned about it and might not have had much choice, given, you know, cold and flu season, whatever, other medical issues they may have that kept them out of school. How do we pull from those students to, you know, incentivize, if you will? And I see that they have an opportunity to go into school five days consecutively, make sure they're on time, they're punctual, do their work, et cetera, and they get signed off, and then I guess it gets reviewed and changed in Aspen, if you will. So I'm going to support this for the one year. I'm curious to see what the data will show, you know, going forward. I've always said it, I think we all acknowledge it, that we do have a huge chronic absenteeism problem, not just at high school, but district-wide. You know, I agreed with having a policy with respect to, you know, you need to be in school. If you're not in school, you can't be taught. That's plain and simple. But I think this puts a little spin on it, and I think it gives students an opportunity, who are or who may have been absent, an opportunity to make that up and show some incentive, show some connectiveness to the school. So will it be grade levels that are going to keep the data on this, or is it one-point person who's going to be responsible for? And how is this going to get reported out to the committee, I guess, at some point next year? Whether it's mid-year or...
I think that it would be reasonable to do it by the quarter so we can maybe see some progress. It'll be done both by grade level and then as whole school, so we'll present data in both ways. You know, before we had a policy, before the F6, we were in the, let's say, the mid-40 percentile for chronically absent. Almost half the school is chronically absent at that point. This policy, with other efforts combined, has knocked it down into the high 30s, but still, that's not even anywhere where we need to be. If a D4 could maybe shave off another 10% of that, then we can really take a look at what's the core group of students that are chronically absent, and what are the things that we could do beyond policy to get them to be in school.
So my last comment will be, in addition to this, I think we really need to start looking at, you know, why students are not showing up? And is there a purpose? Is school a place where I want to be? Is there an interest in being in school? What is driving me to show up every day to school? And if we're lacking in some of those areas, then what are those areas? And obviously, we can talk about maybe, because I don't know that all of this is simply just, you know, chronic absenteeism. I think it's attributed to other things, a students board, that they feel like they're not connected to the school, that, you know, is the school so large, and we know it's a big school, is it so big that it's intimidating, and that's what's causing me not to be there? So I'd like to look at this through a number of different lenses, not just, okay, students aren't here, so we're going to incentivize D4 and give them a chance to make that up. Are we getting to the core of why they're not showing up? What are the reasons?
Yeah, there's a myriad of reasons.
Because I imagine that it's more than just one. And if we can get a handle on this, in addition to some of the other reasons, and we can make school a place where it's interesting and engaging and people feel connected, you know, we always preach, get involved, do something, plug in, I think was Paul Marshall's term. Get yourself plugged in when you come to the high school. Find something that you enjoy and be a part of that so that there's a reason to get up every morning and want to go to school, whether it's athletics, it's theater, it's music, whatever the case may be, maybe academics. But I think we need to take a dive into what are those other areas in addition to this. And I think, hopefully, at that point, we'll start to make a dent in our attendance at the high school. But thank you for the work. I certainly will support it. I wish you all the luck. I, you know, firm believer that we don't, although we sit up here, we don't always have the answers on how to fix some of the things, and if you and others have looked at this and think that this may be an opportunity to increase student attendance, then absolutely, like Mr. Coogan said, bring it on. We want to hear it, and we want to be supportive of it. If it works, great, we were onto something. If it doesn't, then I don't think we're any worse off than we were if we went with another year of F6, quite frankly, given what I've seen in terms of the percentages and how we've moved the dial slightly. I don't think we're any worse off for giving it a shot. So I applaud you and your staff for the commitment and effort, and with that, I yield. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre?
So just a couple of questions. With the current F6 policy, if you have a grade below 64, how does it get coded?
That's the grade you get. So when we, F6 is activated after six absences, but it, I guess it hurts the students the most are the ones that have a grade above 65. So anything above a 65 moves to a 64. Anything below a 64, that's the grade they get.
The reason I'm asking is that I'd be curious to see some data on whether, so if the student fails with a 42, if they're not coded as an F6, you have to individually probably go through to figure that student out, because the attendance wouldn't necessarily calculate an F6.
Right. But in the psychology piece, did the student give up when they hit six absences and they were passing and it tumbled down to the 40s? Or was the student already disengaged? Do you know what I'm saying?
No, it's a valid question. I'm just curious about how you or your staff could actually report that out. It's not necessarily an easy couple of buttons on the computer if it's not coded that way.
Yeah, you have to dive into the...
Really deep. And that would be where I would be personally just interested in seeing, is it a lot of students? Is it? And I recall several years ago, watching, prior to you even being principal, I believe, this coming before the committee, and some of the things they said was, you bring in parents, you try and work with the students before, all the things that I would assume have to be done in every single case. But when I look at the numbers, there's thousands, hundreds of cases then, which I understand how that's not the easiest thing in the world to do. But if, looking forward, if we can get some comparative data, just to try and see where that failure rate comes in.
Okay.
Along with, I'd be curious to see... Along with, I'd be curious to see the grade levels. So we have, whatever, you have ten, eleven, and twelve, and nine, but more so for the ten, eleven, and twelve, is there really similar data, or is one house working, the numbers a lot better than others? Along with that, what happened to those students if they've already given up on school? Do they go to the alternative school and make it, is there more in one versus another? Those are just thrown out as things that I'd be curious to...
I can say in reaction that you see a trend as the student gets older, that there's more chronic absenteeism, particularly when they cross sixteen, and we lose the, the leverage of the courts.
Yeah.
You know, there's no, there's no more leverage.
And that's consistent year-on, that's consistent, what you're saying theoretically, year-in and year-out. So for the last five years, the number went up, is what you're basically saying.
That's, that's what I see, I mean, we can look at it closer for you.
You, you asked, you said about the CRAs for attendance, I think we talked about that at one of the alternative and spread subcommittees. I'd be curious to get some data on how many were filed now that the year's completed, doesn't have to be today, but...
Sure.
To see how many have been filed, because I don't necessarily think the court's helping us, helping you as the principal, to allow students to be absent so many times, and there's really not much we can do about it. But I'd be curious, you know, just on those data, that data. And my last request, I know I'm giving you a lot of requests, but feel free, like, take your time, I'm not looking for it tomorrow morning. I've always been intrigued by the absentee rate and transportation, where the students live, whether they're getting a bus pass. We spend three hundred thousand dollars on bus passes for the high school. I'd always be curious to see, are these the students not showing up? Are they showing up? How many bus passes do they get? Are they, you know, they get a ten-day pass, show up two days to school, and use the other eight days on other things? Any kind of data that you can get or information on that, it just would help us to make the decision. But I'm gonna vote for this, because I do think it's a shot, and I don't think it's the only thing. If you said this is all we're gonna do, I would say we need to do more, in my opinion. But it sounds like this is one piece, but a lot of other things are going into it, so I will support it, and sorry to ask you for that much stuff, but I appreciate your support. I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Simone.
Hi, guys. Just as Mr. Costa said, I think there also are definitely a lot of underlying issues that come with chronic absenteeism, some of them like safety, also mental health. And for, if, if you're gonna pilot this, I think maybe you should also, maybe just pass out surveys for students after term one or something, and ask them why they're not coming to school, or what, or what would make, what would encourage them to come to school, not like other incentives, but just what do they think they would need, or what do they think they're lacking in school, just as an idea? So you could really get the student population.
I think in this way, and in so many other ways, we need to, we need to hear the student voice, and that's, that's some of our best resource, so good suggestion.
Thank you. Mr. Coogan.
I, I got, I have a request for data. Having done this job, I wanna know how many times the kids were absent before they entered grade nine, because I believe that that pattern that we're dealing with, it changes in only a few cases. I think once the kid learns to not come to school, and I know from K to eight, they're grinding to get them in also, but they would show up on our desk with two hundred and fifty, three hundred absences, and here they come, and it's the high school's responsibility to get their attendance up. It was absolutely Game of Thrones battle plan, trying to get them into the building, believe me, it was tough stuff. And that is not, that's not, especially when they hit sixteen, and they know they don't have to come anymore, now we're the ones that are throwing the gate up. And I know the elementary schools and middle schools are fighting this fight also, but all I need is, when you do your little data reports, Paul Coogan, two hundred and fifty days, because that's what I wanna see, because I wanna see, are we, are we improving the rate, or are we, is, or is that gentleman holding steady? Because I think that that's what it comes down to. And again, when they come to us, it's the, the grade ten test that counts, the others they can get by. This one is the final catch-all for everybody, and this data falls to you guys, but it was terribly, terribly frustrating to work with kids that rolled in on us and had two hundred, three hundred days absent in their first eight years of school, and we were supposed to correct it, and it turned into a battle. But I want people to understand that this is a battle that goes on every day, and they work hard at it, but it is, it's, it's fair to know what you're dealing with when you're throwing out these numbers. I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Haxler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was pleased to see the buyback portion of the program. I was a little bit concerned at first, I was like, well, this kid misses four days, whether he's right or wrong, and all of a sudden, his grades, let's say they were good, completely tanked, but the, the buyback portion of it, and then of course, a discretion that they could appeal, and that definitely sold me on it. So I'm definitely gonna support it, and I think that it helps to know that they can work towards recovering their grades. So with that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martins.
Chronic absenteeism, that's for unapproved absences, is that correct?
For the state, it's any absence.
Any absence. Let me draw a little picture. The lovely young lady sitting over here, she's on this committee because of the fact that she's quite bright. Her parents want to go and visit their native country, and she's gonna go with them. It's three weeks long. She goes to her teacher, or teachers, and says, I'm going to be out, and of course, the administration, I'm going to be out visiting my grandparents in my native country for three weeks, and I'm gonna be missing the school days within that three-week period of time. I would like to have the work that I am going to miss, and I will do this, I will make up that work while I'm on vacation, such that when I come back from vacation, you can give me any exam that you would normally give to the students that are there. Is that part of chronic absenteeism?
Yes.
Of which case now, you're going from a child, a student that is quite bright, down to a sixty-four? I can't buy that.
What do you suggest, Mr. Martins?
I suggest that, you know, people, or parents, want to go on to a school vacation, they do all the work, the student gets the work prior to leaving, does the work, comes back to school, and, you know, takes whatever tests that is given, or if there's a concern, well, you could have borrowed the test results from some other student, make up another one, this or that. It's similar, but not the exact same questions in there. Why should that, why should that student be punished?
Well, interesting choice of words, because you're talking, it sounds like a big life journey, and then you use words vacation. I guess my question, I'd answer with a question, will you hold me accountable for the attendance numbers, if this is how we wanna address attendance?
The attendance numbers are what the attendance numbers are. But yet, a, a long time ago, well, I won't go into that, the student has accomplished everything that the student would be accomplishing had the student been sitting in that chair. So why should I now go from, you know, a ninety or better, or an eighty or better, down to a sixty-four? I don't think that's fair at all.
Well, Mr. Martins, we're asking to pilot a D4 adjustment to the F6 policy that the school committee's already approved, so this body has already debated vacations and whether it's appropriate to take a vacation during school time, and whether that should be excused or not. It's not my position to, to change that, I'm asking to pilot something different with the number.
I understand that, but the only thing is, you know, I'm just waiting for someone to question it with regards to, hey, look, my child, my son, my daughter, has done everything that was expected of him or her, except sitting in that seat.
Right.
I'm a bright kid, and therefore I can make up whatever work is necessary in there, and I should get the credits. I'm just waiting for some parent of a bright kid to file a complaint with the Department of Ed, and if necessary, in court, with regards to, well, you're penalizing my son or my daughter. Likewise, illness is illness, you know, any absence. Okay, hey, I'm sick, right? I have the measles, do you want me to come to school?
No.
No, definitely not. So therefore, why do you, why, you know, I'm a bright kid, I'll make up the work. Don't give me any special treatment, tell me what I have to do, and I'll do it.
But if you have measles, I imagine you're under doctor's care, and you'd have a doctor's note that would be an excused absence at that point.
Well, that's why I asked about the excused absence.
But that's something that we discern locally, the state doesn't care. The state, the DESI does not distinguish between the two.
If this is for unexcused absences, I highly support it.
That's what it's for?
Unexcused absence.
Unexcused absences, as defined.
But is, you know, the absences that can be made up, you know, that, I think the students that you're, you're targeting, they're absent, they have no intention of really making up that work, at least not on their own, you know, have to come back, well, stay after school and help me, wait a minute, that's not fair either, you know, because I didn't feel like going to school today, you know, so I have some difficulty with penalizing a student who is a bright student, that because of illness or because of going on a family vacation, that, hey, sorry, you can't go. You tell a parent that, hey, you can't go, your son or daughter isn't gonna go, you know what you're gonna be told, right? I, you know, so, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Chair Costa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanna be, make sure I'm clear with this as well. In the F6 policy, there's also a provision that allows you as the principal, that if an extraordinary circumstance is brought to your attention...
Mm-hmm.
Child's otherwise proficient, you can take and evaluate whether or not to apply the F6, given the reasons for their extended absence. That's in here as well. So the scenario that was just presented to you, if that were the case, and the student was proficient in other areas, you could evaluate that with their teachers to make a determination as to whether or not their absence would have jeopardized their educational attainment during that period. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this, so this can be reviewed upon a parent calling you, and curiosity, I don't need to know exactly how many, how many times has that happened, where parents have called you and said, my son or daughter, for X, Y, and Z reasons, is not gonna be in school, I'm concerned about this F6 policy, can you evaluate their status? And how many, have you received calls like that?
I've been in this position two years, it's happened several times both years.
Several times, okay.
And I would look at all information, I would look at the student's history, I would look at, you know, their overall attendance for the year. I would take in, took in, into consult a multitude of factors. I use reason when arriving at a decision, and I think you would be getting calls if I made bad, bad decisions.
So I recall this policy when it came to us, and that was absent, and I made the argument that if parents decide to take their son or daughter to Wyoming because grandma passes away, and they don't, that child doesn't have a choice whether or not they're going, both parents are going, there's no one to leave them behind with, how does that child then get penalized? And if we do penalize them, what's the incentive, as you described, to come to school anymore? I already got an F, why am I coming anymore? Mom and dad made that decision for me. So I, I asked that that language we put in there, because I thought principals would be reasonable, that they would take a look at the request and the reasons why the student was gonna be, and whether or not it is chronic or not. Because some of the students who that happens with aren't chronically absent. It's a decision made by their parents, and that's what happens. And as much as we can encourage people to take vacations and do their business during school vacations, the reality is life happens, things happen. So I'm glad it's still in there, I think it's important for it to be in there. You know, and again, I, I don't wanna see, and I'm only one person, I don't want to see the burden shifted on educators, to have to prepare three weeks of work for students, whether it's one, two, five students, that's a lot of work in addition to preparing the work that needs to be taught that day in class. And to be able to then go back and have to track that work upon return, grade that, it just, it seems to me is, the, the lesson plans are set, teachers are teaching on a daily basis, for me to come to a teacher and say, can I have work for the next three weeks, because my parents are taking me X, Y, Z, wherever they're going, and then come back, and after that, teacher then go back and grade all that work, to me, I think that's too cumbersome. I think better use of that is, are they chronically absent? Do they display themselves as being chronically absent? If not, then we trust the principals to use good reason and make a decision whether or not to apply your policy next year, the D4, or the F6 for the district.
And how, how I've approached it with parents to date, let's say, they say, look, I'm worried about Joey failing term three, we're planning to go to Florida for five days in such and such a time, will you excuse the absences? I always say, I'll review it at the end of the term, because he might not need these absences waived. Usually lands that they stay under the cap when I say it that way, because if you excuse it upfront, now you're giving carte blanche to be absent the allowable days beyond it.
Right. So I, I thank you for that clarification, I will be supporting it, and I yield, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to approve this?
Motion to approve and waive all readings since it's policy.
Okay, motion to approve and waive all readings, has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. On the motion, Mr. Aguirre.
Just a brief question, the, you know, you talk about going down from the six to the five, and you talk about the CRAs, I think the other piece of this is the legislature that passes the laws around the CRA. So they have numbers in there that are even higher than this. So you can be absent, you could be F6, D6, D4, whatever you wanna call it, and we can't take the kid to court for attendance like in the old days you were able to do, eight per term, that's ridiculous. So I think on top of what you're doing here, we as a district need to get with the legislature to say, you're not helping us in this matter in any way, shape, or form, and to my colleague on my left's point, happens really young, but if we can't take those students to court as young, take the parents to court to show them that there's consequences when you don't show up to school, I, I think that's a problem. So I would ask, you know, if you do get asked by the legislature, I'm gonna try and convene a meeting of some type, because there's several things that they're not helping us with here. My last point is, everybody wants to talk about college and career ready for kids and all this other stuff, well, the first rule of being ready for a career is that you need to show up to work, because everybody out there, including us, if we don't show up to work, we're gonna get fired, but we're not passing that message on to kids, so if you have to be a little tougher on it, as far as one member, I say go for it, because it's just out of hand at this point. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay, and item number four, discussion of votes approve the community eligibility program, CEP.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made, is there a second? Second. Questions? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetza?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Item number five is discussion of votes approve job descriptions, and the job descriptions are listed there for your information.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad the, this be individual considerations.
There a motion to approve the first? This is the Assistant Superintendent of Social Emotional Learning.
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Questions? Mr. Martins?
The term Assistant Superintendent is indeed, like, of this period, certainly there may be a need for division of responsibilities. Then if so, then it should be called something else other than Assistant Superintendent. Right at the present time, there are two Assistant Superintendents. This would require on just item number one, another Assistant Superintendent. This is Empire Building. I do not need to have a title of Assistant Superintendent. Yeah, there is the issue of, well, the school committee hires Assistant Superintendents. It's, who's doing the work? If there's additional need to have, Dr. Dogan's name is in that paragraph, if she needs help, then find administrator of student support services, an administrator of something else in there, all under the terms of, are the, the job description of supervising from Dr. Dog, Dogan in there. I think the community looking at four, well, three, this, number two would be another one, but right now we're dealing with number one, another Assistant Superintendent. It's just another layer of administration in there where indeed this can be done with someone that is not an Assistant Superintendent, but certainly is qualified to help in that particular role that might be in there. The Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Malone, has lots of people that it's responsible for. And it's subdivided into two Assistant Superintendents. And if necessary, the, each of these Assistant Superintendents can have a subsect, subsection of someone else who is as the administrator. It can still say, do the same thing, but without the title and of course without the high pay as well. The amount of money that is involved in here, I could very easily bring additional paraprofessionals for elementary schools. We're increasing the administration and it's, wait a minute, who's doing the work? Who is actually doing the work? That teacher in that classroom needs help. Now, I know that there are, I, there are paraprofessionals that are assigned to IEP students, absolutely so, and I wouldn't take that away, of course, in there. But from what I see, and I'm anxiously awaiting the results of the MCAS testing, which hopefully will come in about October or maybe early November, in there, to see where we are actually, what we are actually doing, how we are doing in there. But if history is there, words isn't going to change it, it's what happens in that classroom. And it needs more paraprofessionals in the classroom to assist not only the IEP students but the regular kids that are there who are actually taking that MCAS test and not doing very well. So I will be voting no for number one.
You yield, Mr. Martins?
I yield.
Mr. Vice Chair Costa?
Just briefly, Mr. through you, Mr. Chairman, Assistant Superintendent, can you tell us, the committee, the pay increase for such a position, is it still fall within the range of salaries that we pay now for people in those administrative roles?
Yes, and I just want to be very clear that we have two Assistant Superintendents and a Director of Special Ed, and my proposal is that we have the same three positions, but with the differentiated responsibility.
So it'll be more of a reorganization of job duties and functions, make each of these responsible for specific staff members within a district in order to streamline the services we need to provide?
With line of authority.
And in addition to that, I'll ask the question again, in these proposals, these job descriptions, are you proposing to increase the salaries to create the empire that my colleague suggests?
We can do this within the ranges that we're currently budgeted.
Currently now, you're not asking for us to increase the salary ranges for these positions?
For these positions, not at this time.
One, two.
No, but there will be, this summer, I will be coming forward, as I said two years ago, on the principals' ranges.
Right, principals, we're not talking about, okay.
With that, I yield. Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Mayor. Sorry, you couldn't do it.
Sorry, that's you, Mr. Aguirre.
Just, I'm going to be voting for this, but I do think it makes sense dividing up the responsibilities, very, adding Special Ed with what Dr. Dogan or whoever's in that position has to deal with is just too much. We need somebody to be focused, doing what they need to do in all different areas, reporting directly to the superintendent. As the school committee, we can hold a superintendent accountable, but we need to have the proper administrative structure below him so that we can actually know who's in charge of something and making a decision. When I read three pages of the stuff that's in here, this person's going to be busy. There's not, this isn't an extra position, I am going to support it and I will be supporting several of these. With that, I yield.
Mr. Coogan?
I have one simple request, you've got to get rid of that name. How about just Assistant Superintendent for Student Support, Health, Wellness, Learning, I mean, I don't know, we need all those words. Seems like a lot of words for a simple name.
It's a lot of words, but you know, we'll cut it down to something simple, but that's, you're in the right ballpark with what that is, is Student Support Services, SEL, it's all those things.
Yeah. All right. I'm going to vote for two.
Let's go, yield. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
This is, I'm sorry, maybe, is this for one at a time?
One at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I apologize.
Did he say yes?
Did you say yes or no, Mr. Martins?
Yes, for one at a time.
No, no.
No, no.
I'm sorry, no.
On the motion to approve.
On the motion to approve the first position, we are taking them one at a time.
Oh, then the answer is no, no.
Okay.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay, second position, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education Services.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made and seconded. Questions, comments? Mr. Martins?
This particular one, again, is another superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, that would now be four in there. And from whence it was to remove the individual from the collective bargaining unit and the, I don't know if the, in order to do so, the duties and responsibilities have to be changed significantly because arose, still arose, no matter what you call it, in there. And if you haven't done so, the, it's got to be substantial change as far as the working, the responsibilities that this individual has in there. Once again, it could be as a, another report, direct report to Dr. Dogan in there. And in private industry, it's not unheard of, of having a supervisor or a VP, Vice President, to have fourteen direct reports. And the concern here is that, you know, it, she needs to have additional help, fine, but you can have that as a title that does not include Assistant Superintendent. I yield.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
No.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Next is the Lead Student Adjustment Counselor, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second with a question.
Second with a question, Mr. Aguirre.
Just on the job title, so the position here is called SEL Coordinator, which I do think that articulates it better than Lead School Adjustment Counselor. So if, when, I think there was something either on the agenda or wherever that it said, we're adding an additional School Adjustment Counsel, but this is a different person, a different job. So if we get truth and advertising, just keep it as SEL Coordinator?
Yes.
I do think it makes sense in, in this day and age, this is a very important position. And since we finally have some money to support the schools, I think this is definitely a good job. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Other questions?
We're on number three.
We're on number three, yes, Mr. Martins. No questions. Okay, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Number four, Director of Curriculum K through twelve, is there a motion to approve?
What is this? So moved.
Motion has been made to approve, is there a second? There's no second?
Second.
Okay, second. Questions, Mr. Aguirre?
So this is a, an interesting position, and I know at several subcommittee meetings, as well as in private meetings with the administration, I raise some concerns about these positions. Not that they're not necessarily needed, but I've watched this district move from different areas where we had department heads at one time, then we increased it to Deans of Teaching and Learning, then we had these positions before, we got rid of them to do something else, and then now we're bringing them back. So I'm going to be personally supporting these positions, but I would ask to the Superintendent that prior to the budget getting approved with these positions in it officially, or whenever, if we could get a sort of a matrix of exactly who's doing what as far as in curriculum. So we had department heads at the high school, they went to Deans of Teaching and Learning, now we're going to add these positions. If we could get something to articulate a, a chart or something to figure out where we're at with adding new positions, what the other folks are going to do, are their job duties different? Because I am concerned that we continually, I did support the other positions. It seems like everybody is making level three A, which is like the highest peak part in the union, and it seems like we have a tremendous amount of those folks now, and there's not a balance, per se. So I am going to support this, but I would ask that we get some information back on what's the plan going forward. For instance, if other people get this, are we going to not fill other positions? I want to support it, so I'm going to do that because I do think it's needed to align curriculum and do all the things that we talk about, but I do have some concerns about what's going to be left to do otherwise. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Martins?
Is this our Social Emotional Learning Lead School Adjustment Counselor, is this for district-wide or is this for a particular school?
This is, Mr. Martins, we're on item number four, Director of Curriculum K through twelve.
I'm sorry?
We're on item number four.
Yes, this is number four.
Yeah, Director of Curriculum K through twelve.
This is SEL Lead School Adjustment Counselor.
No, that's the previous one.
So that's number three.
That's correct. We're on number four. We just voted on number three.
Yeah, well, I don't have any problem with number three. I said, I thought we had voted on that.
No, number three was the Lead Student Adjustment Counselor in the binder listed as SEL, I, I don't.
Part of information, he's looking at the memo, we're looking at the binder.
They're different.
That's correct, and the binder, it's a different title, but it is still the third item.
Yours is different than mine?
No, no. The item, the, the name of the position in the binder is different than on the agenda. However, they are still numbered accurately, so when I said we were on number three, we were on the same one. Now we're on number four, we've already voted on number three.
So we're on the school, I'm sorry, Social and Emotional Learning School Adjustment Counselor?
No, we're on Director of Curriculum K through twelve.
We're on the Early Childhood Coordinator.
Director of Curriculum K through twelve.
Mr. Martins, we're asking that you follow the actual agenda of the school committee.
We're on, we're following this order over here and not that order, okay, that's too bad.
Okay, so item number four, which we're on currently, is Director of Curriculum K through twelve. Do you have a question on Director of Curriculum K through twelve?
Okay, the, am I on?
You still have the floor.
Okay. For Curriculum Director K to twelve.
Correct.
Okay. What is the, what the, you know, I believe Dr. Carlson is the, for Teaching and Learning in there, you know, why do we need to have a K to twelve Curriculum Director when we have that already in place in there? And what is really needed is additional full-time help directly in the classroom of the elementary schools. I cannot support this, no.
Go ahead, please.
So, yes, I would agree, as much help as we can have in the classroom at all times is always important. Right now, what we have had is persons that are stipend for ELA, Math, Social Studies, and Science in order to do alignment across the district, and that's not a great word. However, we have implemented a new curriculum, we are implementing a new assessment system, we are looking to drive increases on the MCAS assessment scores, and when you do not have one person per content core area in order to drive that work, it gets very, it gets very sporadic at each individual school. Since my entrance into this district, every school operates as an island of their own, and what we're trying to do, especially since we have so much trans latency with our students, students moving from one school to the next, is to get some alignment across our schools, to get some common instructional practices, to get some common coaching, instructional coaching, and this is why we need it. I think it's very different than what you're talking about in the classroom level, I don't think it's any more important or less important, but it's something that this district absolutely positively needs. The change from this year, from last year, when it was just me and all 10,150 students and all 1,000 of our teachers, was very difficult. I am not a content expert in secondary mathematics or science, so I really need people who have that content experience and that expertise in order to ensure that we have growth amongst this district. We had three individuals, like I said, that we stipend this last year, and we just had a meeting today with all of our department heads, coaches, and deans, and it's what the Instructional Subcommittee really feels that we need in order to drive us forward.
How many people are in your office?
Right now, I, me.
I'm sorry?
Me.
Just one?
Me. In my office, there's me.
You do not have direct reports for curriculum development?
I, the only direct reports I have are department heads for the arts, for PE and health, and that right now, and then Tracy Curly, Dr. Curly is over data assessment accountability, and then Siobhan Ryan is over grants and social studies, but those are the individuals that report to me at this time.
So it's just, it's really more than just you?
Well, you ask me who's in my office, and that's me.
Okay. What is the principal's role in curriculum development?
There's varying different roles for principals, so we, as we have reported out in the last years, we developed curriculum, we specifically worked with teachers, department heads, key experts along curriculum in order to write and to evaluate different types of curriculums that were free, OEMs. We did choose to go with Engage New York and Eureka Math, and then we created Scope and Sequence along with our Anet partners. Principals are always the ultimate decision-maker within their building, so there is nothing that my office does that we impose upon principals. We always wait to get their feedback, their opinions, and make changes based on their expertise. As a former principal, I'll never take away that school-based autonomy.
You indicated that schools are an island of themselves, I think those are the words you used. Is that correct?
When I first came here, when it came to curriculum, teaching, instruction.
No, now, the, what you just said, the schools are an island of themselves.
When I first came here to this district, in my observation, schools were an island of their own when it came to teaching and learning.
So that curriculum for first grade math or English, Language Arts, whatever, that's common for all schools?
Are you saying when I first came here or now?
No, now.
So now we have what we call a Scope and Sequence, all of our curriculum maps are online, and we are asking all schools to follow that, yes. All of our curriculum maps are online, and we are asking all schools to follow that, yes.
So therefore, for all subject matter, the curriculum has got one curriculum for each, for the district that the individual schools have to follow?
Well, it's not just follow. Um, it's not a scripted curriculum, so there is a lot of work in professional development, in training. We have a lot of new hires that come on. So it is not scripted. Um, it takes a lot of collaboration and planning. We have amazing department heads and coaches and deans that do a lot of that work with the teachers on the school site.
You know, it just seems with all of these, uh... Uh, the hierarchy of administration, that, uh... Person at the bottom of the ladder, uh, and that's not a negative terminology, uh, being the teacher in that classroom, and just, uh, another administrator to, uh, basically be, uh, saying, "Wait a minute, you're not doing a good job." And I find that hard to accept, uh, in there. We'll see, I guess, the, what happens in, for the MCAS testing, uh, in October, November timeframe, uh, in there. I just can't, uh, vote in a positive for increasing the administration, where we've been dealing without, I'd rather have that money used for, uh, assistance directly in the classroom with the students, uh, in there. Even if it means having two, or three, or four paraprofessionals based on the needs of the students in that, uh, in that classroom. Um, and, uh, not having it where, um... You know, not just for IEP kids.
Mr. Martins, I find that very disappointing. It's not just administrators. Um, I think that we have shown over the last two years our level of commitment to our teaching staff, um, our dedication to our teaching staff by including them in the entire process of writing and implementation. Um, if you've been to our professional development, you probably understand that they're co-taught, which means we have teachers in the classroom that are teaching along with administrators. So I hear what you're saying, that we need more, um, support at the classroom level. But you can have 500 teachers, but if they don't know what they're teaching, and they do not know how to align it to the common core, as well as to our frameworks, then they, they're just gonna be teaching just to teach. So I hear what you're saying, but I think that this is a very, obviously, I'm very passionate about this. Um, I think that our kids deserve to have the best, um, but we cannot expect our teachers to just know what to do. We have to be there to support them with the tools and the strategies that they need in order to increase performances within the classroom. And, um, and I think that this is what we need in this district. Um, obviously, I'm standing behind it 100%, but it is not the work of one person, just like the work of a principal is not just them. It takes an army. Uh, it takes a team. Um, Mr. Damaris up here, he's supported very greatly by his team. Um, and I'm sure that he would echo, he needs that team in order to make true change happen. Um, it's the same thing at the district level. I hear what you say. You don't wanna have more of the administration, but, um, in this case, you asked me how many people are working on my office? When it comes to this curriculum and our core ELA, Math, Science, and Social Studies, it is me. We have no core, um, directors for any of our core tested and assessed areas.
But this says that you have part-time people doing basically some of that work?
We have people that are working full-time in a building, that are giving up their evenings, their time with their children, to get a stipend in order to lead the drive within this district, because they are just as passionate, if not more, than I am about this work. And I personally, um, it's not a, it's not a few hours a week job. It is a full-time job. And I don't wanna take people out of their buildings because they are needed within their buildings.
So you're gonna have one full-time person, and you're gonna eliminate these, uh, part-time, uh, stipended individuals?
So if you did the right thing and you voted for this, then yes, we would not be stipending people from the building in order to come to the district to conduct this work. We would have full-time curriculum coordinators. But I need your support on this.
Thank you. I yield.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
No.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay, next item, a second shift custodian supervisor. This is the fifth, one down from the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion to approve is made. Is there a second?
Second.
Just a question, Mr. Vice Chair. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Superintendent, or Mr. Pacheco, either one, but I notice in the salary it says "to be determined." Can you give the committee a range? So that we know ballpark what we're looking? Or can you tighten up the language here that says that before you execute a contract, you come back to the committee? Not that I wanna, I don't wanna open up the wallet, but I also wanna make sure that in all other positions, we have a range. The committee considers it, votes as a part of the job description. This just sort of lets you go out, and if someone's gonna, you could come back with $125,000 individual, and the committee's thinking...
Only if I'm changing jobs, Mr.... It's a, it's a price, it's a, a range of probably between 55 and 65.
55 and 65.
Right.
I yield. Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Early Childhood Development, um, excuse me, Early Childhood Coordinator. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second with a question.
Mr. Agia?
Just, is this a straight, uh, replacement of a retire, retirement?
Well, it's, it's, it isn't, it isn't, because we've readjusted, so... Barbara has led this work in addition to also the Parent Center. I have a director of the Parent Center, and what, where we've singled out is the role of early childhood. So we lived without it for a year, um, and it's a critical need that we have.
So, when we approved the other job, did we say that we were not filling this?
I, we didn't do anything this, this present year. That's why I'm back now with a, with a, um, job description, because there was no single job description for this before. But we, we lived without it this current year, and what I'm requesting is the committee approve. If the budget does get passed, then we'd be able to fill.
In essence, what was the position two years ago?
Yeah. Well, just, but just solely early childhood. So that's regular ed sped, it's a, it's a, and it's, and it's not just preschool. We gotta understand, it's also it's ages three to seven, because early childhood is considered in the literature, uh, three years old up through third grade in terms of the, well, second grade with the, uh, the curriculum, so it's, uh, someone that's gonna be doing a lot of that programming and support, uh, for the, uh, early childhood programming as we grow. And one of the, uh, Mr. Coogan was at an event the other night, a South Coast Budget Discussion, where, uh, we had several, uh, House members there. Uh, in fact, the co-chair, Rebecca Cusick, was there, and we talked about early childhood really being a game changer in gateway cities. I envision early childhood growing in Fall River over the next five years because of what we're learning from the work that we've done now with the four-year-olds at Fonsica in full-day programming. So I think this is something that, uh, will continue to grow, especially when the Department of Early Childhood and the Department of Education most likely at some point are gonna be forced that those kids will also receive Chapter 70 funding.
Right. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're not one year saying we're, we're not filling a position, and we are. I do think there's some, you know, I'm a big proponent of early childhood. I think we should do some of the money we have to increase those slots, so I wanna support this, but it does say that it's negotiable, so, um... Or is this a union position?
This is a union position.
Right. So, I mean, I don't think this is as high-level as the other ones. Um, so I guess that's a negotiation that will happen. But the fact that we had one person that was in the union getting, doing basically this job plus other things, I think this can be on a lower level, as far as my own personal opinion, but that's not for discussion here. With that, I yield.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Can I just ask what the split is between operational budget funding and grant funding?
I believe as of the last time, it was, it was split funded, part from grants and part from operational...
Right. What, what percentage? Is it 50/50 split?
50/50.
And this is a union position, so it'll fall on a scale with, within which union?
Uh, it's an FRAA position.
I'm sorry?
It's an FRAA position.
And it comes down to how many days we want it to, to work when we negotiate with the FRAA.
And that'll determine, obviously, the step within that, depending on how many days we have to work.
FRAA is days and dollars, so...
Okay. And it is split between, in which grant?
I don't know.
Is it the early childhood?
C-face? C-face grant.
What is it?
C-face grant.
Right. Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you. I yield.
Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. And finally, the Assistant Athletic Director. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins?
This is the Assistant Athletic Director?
Yes.
No.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay, item number six, Discussion Vote to Approve Change of Bell Schedule, Start and End Times for the School Year of 2019 to 2020. Mr. Martins?
I'd like to ask what the vote was for the, uh, Lead School Adjustment Counselor?
It was unanimous, Mr. Martins.
I'm sorry?
It was unanimous.
Unanimous. Then, uh, I wish to, uh, uh... What is the proper terminology to change my vote on that?
Yeah, you'd have to make a motion to reconsider at this point, see if there's a...
I'm sorry, when you're not speaking into the mic, I can't hear you.
You'd have to make a motion to reconsider, 'cause you are in the majority.
I was one of the majority. I wanna change it.
Correct. You'd have to make a motion to reconsider, and my understanding is that the committee would have to support.
Okay, I move to reconsider.
Is there a second on reconsideration?
I'll second it, so my colleague can change his vote.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
On the issue of reconsideration only, or on the main...
On the issue of reconsideration.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay.
Motion to approve Lead Student Adjustment Counselor?
Motion to approve Lead Student Adjustment Counselor's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
But I would... Can I ask a question about this? I, I don't...
No, Mr. Martins, that's not, we didn't go backward to ask, ask a question. You wanted to change your vote? You got a second to change your vote. We're not gonna continue questioning. We're on, we're actually on the next item for discussion. So to courtesy for you, the committee went along to change your vote, but it's not time for questions anymore on that particular issue. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzel?
Yes.
Mr. Corey? Mr. Martins? Mayor Cora?
Yes. Okay. Back to item number six, Discussion Vote to Approve the Change of Bell Schedule, Start and End Times for School Year 19 through 20. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Superintendent, do you have any comments?
Yes. I just, I just wanna say to the committee that, um... This is something that is, is never an easy, um, thing to do in terms of, you know, we, we're gonna, we're requesting a, a change at eight of the facilities out of the 16 that we have. Uh, and really, it's transportation-driven, uh, and, um... We did our best we could possibly do to look at the tiering. I know there was, we sent an email to all parents with the proposed times. Uh, we heard back from, from many. Uh, one of the concerns was at the, uh, high school level, will, will kids still be allowed to come in, and that's, that's, uh... We, we, we opened the doors between 6:00 and 6:15 every morning at the high school. Kids come in, they can sit in the cafeteria, so that's not a concern. It's, not gonna be anyone turned away, uh, at all at the high school. The other concern was that the, uh, door and switch was, uh, uh, a half hour later. Uh, when we look at the tiering, we may be able to make some adjustments, uh, in that, but that's the best we could do to get the economy of scale. Uh, we appreciate the feedback of all parents involved, and also to appreciate the, uh, work of, uh, Ken and his team on, on getting, uh, 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 a tiered system in place. The tiered system allows us, uh, to stack schools, uh, so that you can use less buses to provide the same level of transportation. Uh, and overall, it's a savings of money that can be reinvested in the city services or education. So to me, uh, I'm very excited about this opportunity to study it, uh, to see where we go, and I look forward to the, the discussion on this tonight.
Ken, you wanna say anything?
Sure. Um, I can, uh, go over the, the, the schedule with everyone. And, um, again, to echo the superintendent's comments, um, we, uh, we took a lot of time to, um, to keep these changes down to a minimum. Um, but it's the, um, time between schools that's important with the tiering.
We have the schedule here, Mr. Pacheco. I don't know if we have to read the entire schedule. We have that here. So, I'm not sure if we posted on the website, and people will be informed. We don't have to go through the whole schedule. Mr. Vice Chair?
Just, just a brief question. My concern in all of this really hinges on two things. One, the time with the students entering Spencer Boarden in Durfee.
Yes.
There's this, this current year, Durfee went in at 7:55, Spencer Boarden went in at 8:35.
Yes.
So there's a large enough gap there to control that traffic pattern with two schools that are so close by. I understand the need to tier it in a way it's being tiered for transportation issues, but you're gonna put an awful lot of vehicles in that general vicinity all around the same time. Couple that with construction, I just, I, I, I'm gonna ask the question, I'm hoping the answer's gonna be that yes, it was vetted, people looked into it, but did people study, or did someone look into the number of cars that are gonna be now all congested in that area all at once? And is there gonna be an impact to people being able to commute in that, in those neighborhoods? Because, other than that, I mean, I, I just look at those two schools. I believe the reason why we had the start times the way we did is because they're so close by. There's a lot of vehicles, particularly at the elementary level. I'm not so sure about the high school, but I travel through that area every morning. Sometimes it's, it's difficult with the schedule the way it is now. You now ask parents to get their students together, uh, to both those schools in that short window. I think you're proposing now Spencer Boarding, Sp, excuse me, Spencer Boarden will be 8:20, and Durfee's gonna be 8:15. So you got a five-minute window where you're gonna be asking all those students to get to both schools.
So if I could, I'll, I'll start with the, the morning. The morning is obviously, um, a staggered drop-off as opposed to the afternoon. So when we looked at the overall moving of both schools, we were more concerned with the afternoon, 'cause afternoon is one pickup. Everybody gets out at the same time. At Durfee, everybody gets out at the same time. At Spencer Boarden, as opposed to the morning drop-off, where, again, it's staggered. Uh, the morning drop-off at Durfee High School, two-thirds of the students' parents are dropping off Elsbury Street side. Um, buses, thousand kids are coming in a day by bus on the Elsbury Street side. On the Chestnut Stanley Street, Ray Street side, um, it's, it's probably 75/25 as to those who are using the parking lot to park, and then those who are dropping off and making that loop in and out. Um, so, again, to make the time difference and allow both of those schools to, to enter into a tiering system, um, we felt the afternoon, after looking at the numbers, was going to be a better fit, and we did. We increased the afternoon hours, so we increased the pickup hours um, by moving those bell schedules. The other part of it that we looked into was, um, during in the next two years, the construction of Durfee High School would be completed. Once that high school construction is completed, that Ray Street parking lot will no longer be used for the high school. And it's too far away from the school. It's too far away from the school, therefore unless someone really wants to get exercise before or after school, they're not going to park up in that lot. So that lot will be primarily empty, and there will be no way to get from that upper lot to the high school without making some difficult maneuvers to get in and out. The drop-off pattern won't be there. So, long-term, we felt that this was the easiest method to take care of that high school Spencer Borden-Tansy kind of triangle. However, we had to give up one or the other, and we felt that the afternoon was a much more difficult pickup, so we increased the time between the two schools in the afternoon to give more time.
Okay, I just, like I said, I know the traffic pattern now, I drive through it daily, it's tough now, I think you're going to have a problem there, and that's my reluctance, I won't support the change just for that reason. I'm okay with the other changes, but for that one, I just think we're going to put too many vehicles on the road in that same vicinity at the same time, and I think we're going to be getting a number of calls directed to you in the city regarding the congestion over there. That's my reluctance, and so I wanted to make sure I was clear for the record.
Sure.
I understand the need to do it, I'm not saying that we shouldn't tier them, we have to in order to get the best value for our transportation, but I don't think that should come at the risk of the number of cars and the potential for disruption for that entire neighborhood of the city at that time in the morning. So with that, I yield.
Let's come to my attention that there's an individual here for public input time that was not aware of the process. We will not make it common practice, you know, for the public that's watching, if you do want to speak, please get here in advance of the meeting to sign up for public input time, but I also will not stifle this person who did make time to speak to us on this topic. So I'm going to ask that the committee waives the rules and brings that individual down.
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules has been made, is there a second? Second, roll call, on waiving the rules.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins. Mr. Martins.
Could you repeat the...
We're waiving the rules to bring an individual down for public input time who was not here to sign up for, or might have been here but didn't know the process.
Postpone till next meeting?
Postpone what till next meeting? No, no, we're waiving the rules, Mr. Martins, at this time, to bring a member of the public to speak on this topic.
But when is this going to be considered?
Right now.
After the people talk.
Are we doing a vote first?
No, he must have voted so they can come down.
Oh, the public that we have here.
Correct.
I'm sorry, okay, that's fine, yes.
Mayor Cora.
Yes. Please just state your name and address for the record, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Sandra Franka, I live at 4590 Grinnell Street here in Forreva. My children do go to school here, my youngest son goes to Doran on Columbia Street, and he is 11 years old. The reason why I had emailed the office of the superintendent, and I wanted to be here today, is I'm not sure if everything is being considered on the working parent's side. I'm a working parent, I have to be at work out of the city at 8 o'clock in the morning, my husband gets out of work many times at 4 o'clock in the morning, we don't have nobody to actually bring my son to school, and unfortunately, we are not, even though we are taxpayers in the city, none of my children have any services from the city as far as buses or any other help when it comes to that. My biggest concern as a working parent is right now, so I can make it on time to work, I have to drop off my son at school 20 minutes prior to the start time at the school. If Doran changes to 8:38, which is 38 minutes after I have to be at school, I have to leave my son at school at least one hour prior. He's going to be unsupervised in the cold, in the snow, in the rain for an hour, because I have nobody to drop him off, and I cannot change jobs, or I cannot quit my job, because I have to provide for my family. So my hope to this committee is that you all take in consideration all the working parents that have a schedule to follow and cannot choose what time to be at work. I know the budget is big, I pay taxes, every time there's a change, I crunch, but if I have to stay home and I cannot work, I cannot pay taxes, so I cannot contribute to the school budget, the city budget, and all the other budgets. I ask, please take in consideration us as parents, us as working parents. My son and many other children have no benefit to the bus, because we don't qualify, either because of income, or I have requested a bus for my son, I was told I was not, I don't qualify. I work paycheck to paycheck, I can't really afford to pay for somebody to come and drop off my son at school, or to pay for, I know they have a program where you can bring your child to school earlier, you pay a fee. Just because I don't qualify doesn't mean I really have the extra money for that. So I want to just to speak up on the matter, because I hope that you all take in consideration the working parents, so, thank you for the time, and I apologize, because this was my first time, I wasn't aware of the process, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hetzler.
On the topic, I have a few questions, I hope Mr. Pacheco can answer them, Mr. Chair. So I was concerned, like my colleague, Mr. Costa here, with the five-minute time, I'm hoping that after hearing our concern, that maybe, whether it's approved or not, that that matter's looked into maybe a little bit more, and I'm sure you've done some work on it already, but I don't know if there's no further review, maybe some different options. I understand that we have to come up with options in order to get our numbers lower, so we could get a transportation contract out there, get our numbers where we need them. So approval or not, if there is something we can do, I don't know if we can come back at a later time at another meeting and approve maybe something different, I'm just throwing it out there. Is there any options, anything you could think of that would help alleviate?
There's always options, so, I mean, to throw the baby out with the bathwater doesn't make any sense, so we will try to, we can try and rework Spencer Borden and the Durfee issue. Trying to align enough schools to tier, so three schools, you know, tiering twice is ideal, and we tried to do as much of that as we could. Also, matching the amount of buses from one school to the other is how you tier. So putting the third school in there helped out, and each time we, each time we start, so if we try to move Spencer Borden out of that particular tier, go back to its old numbers, we need to match up another school, and the proximity of the school, obviously, is that if you don't tier with a school close enough, then the amount of time in between start times and end times has to be much greater. So the closer the school to each other, Spencer Borden and Tansy, if Tansy was a busing school, then Tansy would be an ideal tier because they're so close. So things can be worked out, if the committee has just one issue, then we can work on that one issue to try and amend.
I don't want to yield yet, but if you want to comment, Superintendent.
I'm sorry, and I apologize, I just want to say, though, like, we know that the concern with the high school and Doran, and what we're hoping is through the next phase of the process, that may be final, and I'm going to work with Ms. Cusick, because by the end of the Friday, we have to have next year's start and end times to teachers under the contract, and that's one of the time crunches, but perhaps we can work something out, but we know within a range, looking at these, that we could perhaps adjust some, because we've heard loud and clear about the concern that Mr. Costa raised, that you raised, but all of the, the majority of savings in the transportation is the tiering, that's the real issue.
So I absolutely understand why we're doing this, and I want to apologize to any parents that it's going to affect, my own sister called me, asking me not to support it, because it's going to affect her, but unfortunately, this entire of the city is on the hook for this transportation money, so we have to tier, it's the only way we're going to end up saving money, and I understand that. So I know we have to have a special meeting, I believe, regarding transportation, if the changes can be made prior to that time, and prior to having to notify the teachers, we can consider it then. For now, I'll support the changes, and again, we can't make everybody happy, but this is what we need to do to save the city millions of dollars. With that, I yields, thank you.
I think it's important to note, too, that, you know, if there are special instances that are, that are creating hardships, that I would encourage anybody listening, watching, to reach out to the school department, to the superintendent, and I think that those hardships can be addressed. Not everyone will have a hardship, so these changes will not negatively impact everyone, but they certainly are going to impact some people negatively. Those individuals should take the time to reach out to the superintendent. We heard from one tonight that made time to be here, that's paying attention, there may be other people that are not paying attention, there may be people that it's not going to affect, we don't know. We can't make our decision for the entire district based on that, that unknown, but if there are people watching at home that this may create hardship for, please reach out to the superintendent, school committee, to hopefully solve those hardships, I think that's very important. I don't think that this is going to be totally swayed in a different direction, based on the hardships, as Mr. Hetzler, I think, was alluding to, because of the savings that are not, that are necessary and not something that we're doing just to save money, it's to continue to fund all those different entities that we talked about earlier, police fire, city budget, school committee budget, so I think that's really important to make a point today. Mr. Agia.
As far as the process to get to this point with these times, can you articulate what that process was?
With these times?
Yeah.
It's basically laying out all of the current routes, and the amount of buses going to each school, and moving times around on each school's start and stop times, so that they would align in a way that would allow us enough time in between to tier these schools one right after another. So basically, the majority of these, of these schools, the majority of our busing, was done with single routes, we had a few tiers, but most of them were done with single routes. And the only way to fix that issue was to tier, and the only other way to fix that issue was to silo all of the different departments, regular ed, special ed, door-to-door, 7D, it's the only way it could be fixed, so...
But to come up to these numbers here, with each of the schools in red?
Yes.
What was the process used for those, like the young lady that talked about Doran?
So in order to make... Right, so in order to find schools, I'm just going to do one tier for you, so you can see the numbers, it's real quick. CUS, Henry Lord, and RPA. So CUS has a start time of 7:10, Henry Lord has a start time of 8:02, and RPA has a start time of 8 o'clock. So CUS has five buses, Henry Lord has four, RPA has one, so it's the perfect number, five, four and one, five and five, we can tier. So between CUS and Lord, there was enough time between 7:10 and 8:02 to tier four of the buses. The final bus between CUS and RPA, between 7:10 and again, 8 o'clock, there was enough time to tier that last bus. So we, instead of having 10 buses, we're down to five. That happened throughout this piece. So the reduction was made by basically taking those times and adjusting them some, for instance, CUS, Lord, and RPA, those times, Lord was adjusted, RPA was adjusted, and CUS stood the same, because it's an ELT, and it was almost at both ends of the spectrum anyway.
So, but the question I'm asking is, as you were going through this process, what would the principal of Doran School say?
They didn't, we basically, we basically did the numbers on the schools, making the adjustments as small as we possibly could. We didn't do anything drastic, we tried to keep them within, within a certain amount of time, following, following the collective bargaining agreement with the FREA that was allowed, so they gave us a window to operate in. And operating in that window, we had a start and end time that we had to stay between.
Right. So I take that as the principal wasn't included in the discussion.
The principals were included in the discussion during the executive meetings, where we made everyone aware that we were going to be changing start and start times, and the only exceptions I made was two or three schools that I felt we wouldn't be touching, Tansy, Stone, Watson, and CUS, because the fact that CUS was on both ends of the spectrum. All the rest of the schools, their times, they were told that they would be possibly changed.
Correct, what I'm asking, though, is what would the impact of that change be? And I'm asking what the Doran School principal said was the impact in education for families prior to this change happening, is my, that's my specific question.
So is the question the families, or is it impact on the education side?
Both.
I don't know what the family impact is, I do know what the education impact was, because Principal Bradley said that he would work with these numbers, that they were doable.
Yeah, my concern is just, I don't like the whole process, how this has gone. When we looked at the consultant reports and all of the things that we talk about, it's been stated, educational needs are the important thing that should drive transportation, not financial, that's in all the documents, as I kept reviewing them. We also have to balance that between finances and how much money we have available, so I get that. But when I look at it and say to myself, the educational needs, are we doing this because of educational needs or for money? We're clearly doing it just for the money, for the savings, not for the educational needs. I'm not asking you to answer that, that's my opinion. The other piece of this is, through this process, is the software up and running, and have we run all the numbers through the software?
Software is, we're in session number four of 12 sessions with the software on the training. The software is going to save us additional dollars, but it's not going, this is the crux of it right here, if you don't change bell schedules, you're not going to be able to save any money. We are our own worst enemy with, number one, the way we did our bid specs originally, not prior to this time, and also the fact that our bell schedules, we had almost seven schools starting at the same time, ending at the same time, the fact that we had two or three different companies at every school, which didn't allow us to tier, and still wouldn't allow us to tier today if we didn't make those changes. So we, we were the cause of not being able to tier, of not being able to save money on, on transportation. So the only way to fix that would be two ways, number one, bid the specs so that they would keep things in silos where they belong, and it's proven with these numbers, and number two, keep the, change the bell schedules so that we would have enough time in between to allow a bus to go from one school to another school and save one full bus every time that happens.
Yeah, so I mean, it's manual, you're going through the process manually.
It's manually, yes.
You know my feeling on the software, I think we missed that part, I think it would be much different.
And Mr. Agia, I said about five months ago that that is on me.
I understand.
That was my mistake, I know nobody's looking to place blame, but I'm going to say it again, and I will continue to say it, it is my fault that that software wasn't in place. No, no excuses.
I understand. The question I have, though, and I really understand the financial piece of this, that we have to make changes, but I, for one, am just telling you point-blank that I don't feel really confident that this was as inclusive of a process as we needed to have as a general statement. What I would ask, and it's kind of piggybacking on what Mr. Hetzler said, if we get the software up and running, and it does come up with one or two, it's not going to do all of these things, but if there's further, either savings or through other processes, is there room to change any of these, or are we stuck with the Friday deadline of...
All I can say is that, contractually, Friday is the deadline for all the schools except for Tansy, and Tansy would be on Monday, end of school, making that an ounce, that doesn't mean that you couldn't impact bargain for the rest and any other changes, but with, without impact bargaining, the contract will allow us to make those changes, and they need to be in place by Friday.
So if bargaining wasn't an issue, if timing wasn't an issue, would these numbers change?
These start times? I can tell you that if timing wasn't an issue, so if we did not have to make these decisions immediately, then we would have, there are not many more options that we had, because we did do this over four or five days' worth of repeatedly, you know, trying something and then finding out we were just short. And we also had some cooperations with the bus companies that, you know, maybe not an hour was needed in between, maybe we could do 40 minutes, depending on the proximity of the schools and the stops, some of our stops are relatively close together and close to, kind of in line of getting to the next school. So I think that some of this stuff played into, into our decision-making, I don't know how much more time, I don't know what time would do for us on this particular piece. I can tell you that if, with the deadline on Friday, and if there is a meeting Wednesday, or Thursday, whatever it is, then we would be, we're going to be hard-pressed to make all of these changes in a few days, not that we won't try, because that's what we're here for, so we will do what we can to move around a couple of them. I can tell you that every, every move is going to create someone else, an issue for someone else. So if we're bringing, you know, the parents into the mix, which we should, we fix one, we're going to disrupt another. As far as the Durfee piece, I understand Committeeman Costa's... As far as the Durfee piece, I understand Committeeman Costa's concerns with that and I'm very concerned. I've been concerned from day one, the fact that we have so many schools in one area. And the traffic on Elsbury Street will not get any better whether we build a new school or whether we don't build a new school. Elsbury Street is Elsbury Street. But we, we're going to do the best we can now to see what we can do with this. But my concern is, is the Friday deadline right now. And that's what I have to live with.
So one more question. When I look at the Henry Lord, the fourth one down?
Yes.
We're actually lowering, having them get to school 33 minutes earlier than at current. Was, has there been any discussion of whether that's a prudent thing to do with a school that's in need? Plus having a hard time, I'm sure, with attendance and the like?
Again, Mr. Costa, I, I mean, Mr. Aguirre, I don't know on, as I said, a lot of this stuff was done, the mechanics of it was done with these times. And then we looked at the amount of time on tasks that the schools had. We made sure they were exact, that we didn't shortchange anybody one minute. But we also, we also were being driven by trying to match bus for bus in order to get the, the most value on those buses.
I mean, I would ask the same question. What did the principal say about that at Henry Lord?
We didn't have any pushback from Principal Brownhead.
She was consulted and said it was?
And she was, she was told at the meetings also.
The, I'm just still a little torn about how to proceed with this, but maybe a procedural question? If we're gonna have a special meeting, could we potentially table this until that meeting? To just let you work on some of these issues that we talked about? And maybe come back with further information since it's a, a timing thing? And at the same time, potentially requesting of the bargaining units to waive the Friday deadline because we do have a situation going on here that maybe they could give us another 30 days. I don't think it's gonna hurt anything to study it a little more, maybe get the software up and running a little greater. And, you know, I think that maybe between now and the special meeting, you could request that from the union.
We would need to have a special meeting on Thursday.
Yep. No, what I'm saying is, if we had the meeting on Thursday, what would be difference in just tabling this right now? Because there is some discussions. And having some other things happen between now and Thursday where you could come back to us with either some changed routes or some different information or a potentially waived, waived the timeline? Because it doesn't make sense to hold us to that timeline. And quite frankly, if I have to vote on it today, I'm gonna vote no. But I would be open to tabling it for more discussion at some point to deal with it at the special. With that, I yield.
Mr. Bicic, do you have any comment on that?
I don't.
Does that affect the process?
I don't, I, I, I'm, I'm gonna go by the fact that the, go ahead, Mr. Superintendent.
So I would advise the committee that this conversation has to happen and it has to happen in a short period of time. What I would suggest is that the, if the item were tabled, that the committee consider having a special meeting in an expedited manner. And to answer your question, would we be coming back with any sort of enhanced model? The answer is, that's a possibility because every day we've been talking about, since we started getting feedback, what can we do? And, and one of the things that I think could also be clear is that if we look at it, it's a range of start and end times. And, you know, no later than, no earlier than, that kind of thing. We could get a little more detailed and be able to come back to the committee, particularly around the concerns that were mentioned around Doran and the high school and Spencer Wood. But I, at the same time, I have to urge the committee that I can't kick this can down the road till the week after.
Understood.
You yield, Mr. Aguirre?
Yes, I yield.
Mr. Coogan?
I, I, I have a question addressing the young lady's concerns. Is Doran an extended day school?
It's extended by one half hour.
I, I would make a suggestion, just obviously deferring to you guys, that if this time holds, why can't we move some of the extended data before school? So that the people that have to drop their kid off at the regular time and are afforded an open school to go to? And my second suggestion is that if they have to drop their kids off just about at any school in, in Fall River earlier due to our changes, I want the library or the gym open or have a paraprofessional there supervising those kids. I don't want kids hanging around in the snow and the rain on the streets in front of Doran or on the side of it. I want, I want them to be able to go into the building, stay dry and, you know, hopefully do some work in the library, do something. But I do not, I don't, I hate seeing, we used to have that at Durfee where they'd hang outside till we opened the doors and it'd be pouring rain. I want them inside. I think we can do some modifications with the after-school to accommodate a parent like that very simply. If we have a couple of classes like that, we move a couple of people to before school and then we, the ones that wanna have their kids there later, we offer them that opportunity.
As I stated earlier, Durfee is not on the table because we do open the doors so early.
Absolutely.
And kids come in, there's no one waiting out in the rain. In these specific circumstances, though, we have these situations now. Buildings don't open till X time and I have parents dropping kids off 15 minutes before that. I don't have supervision in those buildings at that time. So that building is not open. But we have to be human in understanding this and study it and say, where are the buildings that I could have? Now, some of our buildings have, what do we call it? The morning program.
Take care.
Take, is that what we call it? Yeah, all right, all right. So some of our buildings have that, I don't know exactly which. And those are all fee-based programs.
Correct.
Based on need. But, you know, we're gonna work with parents. This isn't about us just saying, yeah, let's do this and, and forget about it. What we're, what we're gonna do is, is work with parents. And then we have other scenarios around even just transportation. I mean, some people get transportation because they qualify, other people don't, but there's always hardships. We take all those considerations, we look at them, and when we can help, we help. I, you know, I think that's one of the great hallmarks of this district is, we help parents.
Yeah, but what, what I want understood, from my perspective, and it doesn't matter which way, sometimes we vote. But like, you got a parent that's gotta go to work to drop the kid off. I, I don't want the kid dropped off at 7 o'clock and the doors don't open till 8 o'clock while the guy's standing out there on the curb or sitting on a bench. I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't sound good to me. And I know that like on an extended day program like Doran, if there's 30 teachers, I gotta believe that two of them would say, I'll take some kids in the morning. I think there's a way to do it.
So Doran is not like extended day like CUS is. It's all core program, but it's not the enrichment programming that you have, that we can hire different people.
Well, maybe we modify it.
There's all sorts of things we could do.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't want, I don't, I don't, I didn't like hearing that. I don't want, I don't want a kid out in the snow and the rain, let's, let's give him a break.
But at the same time, we're also not daycare. So, I mean, we have hardships. If there's a hardship on school time, I'd even be offering this parent through conversations, you sure this, you know, is there another school time that better meets your needs? I mean, I help parents all the time.
Okay.
And we're not gonna hurt a parent, we've never done that.
Yeah.
So, you know, but we gotta also run the system. And I gotta make sure that, you know, it's not, okay, everyone drop your parents, your kids off and we're gonna take care of them. I don't have that capacity.
I understand. But when you change a school time like that, that radical in one year in short notice, like we're talking about, maybe we give them a year transition to try to play around with stuff so people can adjust to it.
I think you've heard us say that we're gonna be very flexible and work with parents. And as I just said to you now, if the committee holds a special meeting and we table this part of the conversation for then, I think when you see us come back, those adjustments, we're gonna do the best we can do to, to get something that makes sense, but also accomplishes the tiering. Now, we had to like, I'll give you an example. Fonsen can't tier next year because of the school redesign turnaround plan. Their time is set, so they can't tier. We can't change their time given they're a 20-minute additional extended, it didn't match up. So that one stays stagnant. We can relook at, at all this and be able to have a discussion with the committee at the special if they so choose, that I think would, would do a good job of showing due diligence on our behalf and, and meet some collective needs that you've articulated.
Okay. I yield.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. I understand there's been a lot of discussion about whether or not we should take this vote tonight or not. I, I think the best thing to do is take the vote. If it's an affirmative and you change the schedules, then you have the marching orders. If it's not, then I think take into consideration some of the comments that have been made. And if there is gonna be a special meeting, bring back another proposal to the special meeting for consideration. You know, I, I made my point clear before, told you exactly the reasons why I wasn't gonna support it. You know, to talk about a special meeting by Friday, I just want the record to be clear that I have both professional and personal obligations. I cannot make a special meeting this week. That doesn't mean the body can't meet and vote without me. But I just wanna be on record where I stand on this issue now. And if we take a vote, I'll vote on it. If not, then, if it's a special, then the vote will happen without me. But I just want that clear for the record. With that, I yield.
Thank you. All right, well, we have a motion that's been seconded that is on the table. I'm gonna call for a roll call unless there's any other motions. Roll call.
Oh, oh.
I'll make a motion at table.
Okay, motion at the table, is there a second? A motion at the table?
I'll, I'll make the motion, I'll second it with a question. This schedule and the bus?
Nope, no discussion on the table.
Oh, okay, no discussion on the table.
So you're tableing it? Second? Mr. Coogan, is that a second on the table? No, okay. We have a motion at the table, is there a second? Okay, there's no second. First motion's still on the table. Let's approve, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
No.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
No.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Cora?
Yes. At number seven is a vote to approve the year-to-date budget report.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is made, is there a second?
Second.
Second, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Question?
On the motion to approve, there's a question, Mr. Aguirre?
Just looking at the attachment for the school healthcare projections. Am I reading this right, that the difference is 945,000 again?
Yes, certainly is.
So what is, what is the mechanism for that now at the end of the fiscal year? What, is that this roll, like if we don't do anything, it's just gonna roll till?
Yes, so at, so at this point, we will prepare the, the end-of-the-year report in September. The deadline is September 30th. Once we submit the end-of-the-year report, any additional adjustments, you know, one way or the other, will all fall out, the insurance will fall out. There'll be a number that we were short this year. That number will carry into fiscal year 2020. And at that time, we'll be able to report out exactly how much we're short in the end-of-the-year report with the city.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would be cautious with just waiting till the end of the year report. We know, technically speaking, it's 945,000 of money that's in this healthcare fund that we can actually have on our, in our budget in July. So I would personally wanna have that discussion before then so that we can figure out when the dust settles on the budget, what we actually have for revenue to deal with. With the same budget report, and I didn't look at the bottom, but maybe you just know the answer. What is, are we gonna be left with any surplus in the bottom line?
For this year, no.
We're gonna be pretty much right at zero after whatever the changes we've already made?
Yes, yes.
Have we spent any of the second round, third round of McKinney-Vento Puerto Rican assistance money?
No.
How much is that?
938,000 for this year.
So I know it's already June and the meeting, you know, the budget at some point has to get approved by the state and the city. When we've added positions, are those people getting legitimate letters? If we've advertised for the jobs and hired people or recommended people or whatever? Is, are we locking people in at the current time?
So what we're doing currently, the only thing we're doing is current existing positions that, for people that we know that have retired or, or resigning as of the end of the year. We're trying to get the best qualified candidates we can now and trying to lock them in for next year.
Right. But my concern is the jobs that we advertise that are new. What are we doing with those interviews? Are we not filling those until August?
Until the budget is, is fully approved by the, the city council, we're not going forward with those positions as of yet.
How many of those? Fifty?
If I had to throw a number, I, I couldn't give you an exact number, but I'd say somewhere in the 30, 30 to 40 ballpark, somewhere in that range. Yes.
So as it currently stands, we're not gonna be able to lock these people in until, I don't know, middle of July, August?
More than likely, yes.
And maybe this is a HR question related to those positions, maybe through the chair. May I ask Mr. Coogan to come up?
Sure, Mr. Coogan.
So on the positions that we're talking about, are you following the line of questioning?
I am.
Are we risking not having these people locked in because they can't get officially hired?
That's a, that's a risk we face every year. This is recruitment season. So the positions that we have been able to secure, that we know are existing and previously budgeted for, those pieces, positions are being filled and they get appointment letters now. We have not posted or advertised any of the positions that are proposed, but not okayed yet by the budget because we can't give up letters. And if the funding's not there, we, we have a bind.
So we haven't even posted some positions?
We haven't posted positions that are proposed but not approved in the budget. The budget has not been-
I thought we had a, a report that stated we were gonna prepare the applications, put them out subject to funding. So that we would, you know?
We have not, we have not posted any proposed positions. We are posting and filling positions that are previously budgeted, have been vacated by resignations or retirements.
Well, I for one member have been told personally and gotten information in writing, basically, that states we're not, we're gonna post the position so we can do, if I'm a principal of a school and I'm adding a new school adjustment counselor, why in the hell would we not let that person go advertise now when we get the best people? Lock that person in if they really wanted to hire somebody? Why would we not do that now? So that when the budget gets done, even if it's in two weeks, that we just, it's done? We haven't even advertised some of these proposed positions?
Anytime we can use a duplicate posting, in other words, a SAC, for instance, you mentioned a counselor, right? If we have a vacancy for that counselor, we create a pool, we interview, and we rank those candidates. So we have candidates, we're communicating with them, explaining the budget process and telling them they're here shortly. But we do not have funding in place for those yet and we're not, we're not securing those, those hires. You're, you're preaching to the choir, I'd love to do this. But anytime you post an anticipated vacancy and offer some type of commitment and you don't have money in hand, I mean, that's not fiscally responsible either. So we walk that tightrope every single year. This year, we're ahead of the curve because of the process, but we have pools for those positions.
We have more money in this district right now than we've ever had, almost in my entire adult life, that we haven't even spent yet. But we're gonna sit and wait and say, well, maybe we'll let these positions go, we'll get them in August. I think that's so ridiculously foolish to do when we have more money right now. I just pointed out, 1.8 million dollars that we have extra that we haven't even spent yet. This committee hasn't even spent yet. And we haven't made that decision to say, yeah, let's hire the best people, let's advertise, let's lock people in, let's give them. We have 1.8 million dollars that's not even spent yet. And we're gonna say, well, no, well, let's just wait until August. Wait until August to do it. It, it defies logic in my mind. I know I'm preaching, you said I'm preaching to the choir. As far as one member, I'd be willing to take a vote right now to allow you to, to fill these positions because we're gonna have the money. It's ridiculous to have the amount of money that we have sitting not spent and not hire the folks that we need to hire in the new positions and all the things that we talked about. It makes no sense. We have extra money, we're gonna have extra money, let's lock the people in right now instead of waiting. I don't see why we can't do this, I really don't see why we can't do this.
Well, can I answer his question?
Mr. Superintendent, hold on. Let Mr. Aguirre finish his point and then I'd like to make a comment and then I'll recognize you.
Thank you.
I yield.
So I was gonna caution my, my colleague on spending money now because my understanding is our proposed budget and what the city's proposed right now is about a million, almost a million and a half, million six. Different, there's a gap there. So although we may be getting 1.8 million in additional money, we still haven't found out what our final number's gonna be appropriated yet. So we may need some of those funding to cover what we already have as needs in the district. So I agree, I don't like waiting until the end. We've done this for far too long and then the cream of the crop goes elsewhere because they don't get a commitment letter from us and then we end up with what we end up with. And then it becomes a, becomes a problem for HR standpoint and then we have to either- because then you have to either, you know, continue to work with these individuals or eventually they roll, they flush out through, through, um, retention issues. So, I, I would only make that as a cautionary statement, but, um, I'll let the superintendent make a comment, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah. So, we, we don't hire new positions or give letters until the final budget's passed. Because there is a delta right now of 1.6 million dollars, and no guarantee we're gonna get that. Now, there's, has been word that we'll get 100% of net school spending or whatever that final number is, but I believe it when I see it. And we don't know what that final number is. We also know the House is about 500,000 dollars above what the governor's number is, and the Senate was about 2.6. I'm assuming it's gonna even out. We'll be back at that probably, hopefully, right around the budget that you guys approved. And we can post for these positions right now, and we can give, and, and I've given tentative letters to folks, pending budget, we want you in certain jobs, but we can't hire right now, given the lack of, this, it may not be real. And it, blame it on the process. It is what it is.
I understand. With all due respect, Mr. Superintendent, I know you had to step out. I just asked Mr. Coogan if we had done the jobs, we've advertised the jobs, we tried to recruit the people to start the process. The director of HR just said, no, we have not. Now, you're saying, yes, we have. You can understand why my facial expression wasn't.
The new positions, we, we, we have not hired in positions that don't exist. We've given tentative letters on all the other job openings we have.
To replace the people. My concern is, the people that we have, we, you came before us saying, we need all these new positions because of the needs in the district. I wanna help you. I'm trying to help you guys here. Yep. The bottom line is, is you add up those numbers, take the delta of the 1.5. I just asked Mr. Almeida when you stepped out, we have 900,000 in the McKinney-Vento Puerto Rican relief funds. We have 900 and some thousand in healthcare funds that's gonna come back to us. We have, right off the bat, in my own head, 250,000 in Anet that was in the last, next year's budget that we're not gonna need. You start adding this up, and I'm only doing it off the top of my head. We're at 2, 2 million, 200, 2.3 million, 250,000 in transportation that we paid, that's over, that the city's gonna pay us back. I'm at 2.3 million before I even started to look at any paperwork. All I'm saying is, we know we're gonna get that money. So, I'm trying to give you guys the benefit of saying, go out, recruit the best people, lock them in and hire them. If that's not all of them, if that's the list, and you say, you know what, we, these here, we can wait, but really, we wanna lock people in. I, for one, know we're gonna have more money. We need to lock people in, in my opinion. With that, I yield.
All right. I know you're new on the committee here this past year. This is my third year. I've never posted positions that weren't approved until the budget. If the committee wants to direct me differently, I'll gladly do it because it is a benefit. But I have not posted positions that don't exist until the final budget's approved. That's the way I was trained, and that's the way my practice has been. If you want me to post those positions and go out and try to find the, the best possible people, I will gladly do that. I've only been doing what I thought was the just and honorable thing to do. If you wanna give me that go-ahead, I'll do it.
And I've had those conversations earlier in the budget process. And the answer that I received from, I believe it was you, maybe Mr. Coogan, maybe in public, I'm not even sure, was, yeah, we're gonna go out and post the positions, we're gonna do the advertising. So, when the money comes in, we're already, we got our people identified and everything. If we haven't started that process now, in the beginning of June, we're not hiring anybody till the end of July. And we're not gonna get the best people if we wait that long. So, I, I would make a motion then that we allow the superintendent to advertise and post all positions.
Mr. Agia, there's a motion on the floor to adopt, to vote to approve the year-to-date budget report.
I'll do so on new business. I take that back.
This was discussion during an agenda item. So, is there any other further discussion on the end-of-year report? There's been a motion to approve. It's been seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
We have a number of items for your information. Resignations, appointments, death notices. Is there a motion to accept and place on file?
Do you accept all?
There's been a motion made by Mr. Coogan, seconded by Mr. Hetzler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Are there any topics that, for discussion on the new business that could not reasonably be anticipated by the chair 48 hours prior to the meeting?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia?
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize the superintendent to advertise and begin recruiting for all new proposed positions in the FY '20 budget immediately.
Mr. Agia, I'm gonna rule at this point that that's something that the chair could have reasonably been informed of 48 hours prior to tonight's meeting. It's not on the agenda. I'm not trying to prohibit the committee from taking action. I just think that the open meeting law, I, I think that it skirts, um, posting on an agenda for public notice. I think that's something that the committee could have made the chair aware of if they were choose, you know, if they were choosing to address that issue tonight. Um, so, that is an item that I, I think at this point is not, uh, an item for discussion this evening.
So, yeah. So, the issue, uh, that was raised tonight was, I was told something that I just found out 10 minutes ago, not, never mind 24 hours or 48 hours ago, that we haven't posted. So, it's not something that could have been anticipated because it was under a false belief. Um, I would.
And, and I'm not disputing that. I'm just saying that you also made comments, you had stuff in writing about these postings and that there were comments made about these postings. I'm just saying that if there was information that the committee knew about prior, 48 hours prior to this meeting, and felt that they needed to take action on this particular item, my one position, and it just so happens now with the mayor's absence as chairing this, is that that's something that could have reasonably been anticipated and could have been forwarded to the mayor for an agenda item. Um, I, I, I'm with you, Mr. Agia. I wanna be supportive, but I also don't wanna open this committee up to a complaint down the road where we don't have many legs to stand on. And I don't know what the threshold is for someone to, um, decide whether or not the committee was in violation of your meeting law. I'll defer to Attorney Assad to give the committee.
And no need to, I mean, I just, I think I made my point. The bottom line is, I think we need to get this done yesterday. So, I think we should make a motion to move this, put on the agenda for Thursday at the special meeting, and also to have new business, uh, on the agenda for Thursday as well.
Certainly. So, I, I, the motion that was made by Mr. Agia is to add the topic of unfilled vacancies for the FY '20 budget, be placed on the agenda for discussion and vote, Mr. Agia?
Correct.
And that be placed on the, um, any proceeding meeting to include a special meeting?
That's the motion.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Mr. Coogan, then I'll open it up to committee members for any discussion.
I just had a question. I don't believe I'm gonna be, if the meeting is held on Thursday, I don't believe I'm gonna be able to attend. Is the desire to put the agenda on to post anticipated vacancies, and that would allow us to build a pool, and then by that time, we advertise for two weeks, which is the typical posting done, minimum posting time, and then we could begin to fill at that point, that should coincide with the budget final?
So, I'll defer to the maker of the motion. I believe the intent is to get the process going.
The intent is just to get it going. So, I think on Thursday, we would have that debate. But the idea would be, obviously, to get the people going, let the principals know, get some candidates in. Because, as you know, if we wait till the end of July, we're not gonna get the best candidates. So, this is an effort to help you guys, to help the district, not to hinder anybody's progress. So, that would be my intention. But if we have it as an agenda item and it changes on that day, to authorize even greater than that, then so be it. But I think putting it on the agenda allows us that flexibility.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion that's on the table? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
Any other issues for new business? Hearing none. Is there a request this evening for executive session, Attorney Assad?
There would be reasons for executive session.
I'm gonna ask, um, for you to state those reasons, and I'll call upon the committee to see if there are any motions.
First would be national laws, chapter 38, section 2187, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the May 13, 2019, regular meeting of the Florida School Committee. Second, we'd met, uh, national laws, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the Florida School System represented by the Florida Federation of Paraprofessionals, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a bargaining position of the committee. Also, national laws, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on the litigation position of the committee. Also, national laws, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation with respect to the following lawsuits filed in the Bristol County Superior Court. First, Adrian Gregoire versus the City of Fall River School Department, docket number 1573 CV 00278. Also, Colleen Murray Hacke versus City of Fall River Department, uh, I'm sorry, City of Fall River School Department, docket number 1573 CV, uh, 00075. Also, Susan E. Pacheco versus Meg Mayo Brown, Fall River Schools, the Florida School Committee, docket number 1673 CV 00486, as the chair has determined that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a litigation position of the committee. Also, national laws, chapter 38, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, with respect to the following complaints and lawsuits filed with the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, first being Stewart Primus, versus the Florida Public Schools, docket number 18BEM 00940. Also, Maria Borges versus the Florida Public Schools, docket number 19NEM 00559. And Elena Bernard versus Alfred S. Luterno Elementary School, docket number 19BEM 00885, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a bargain, on the litigation position of the committee. Also, national laws, chapter 38, section, section, excuse me, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, with respect to the following litigation claims filed with the Workers' Compensation Board, Paul Burrard, uh, docket number 2314-15/5140-15. Also, Rory Junior, docket number 02284-18. Kevin Govea, uh, docket number 10558-14/32575-11. Also, David Machado Junior, docket number 028254-15. James Gillette, uh, Gillette, docket number 011715-18/422-17. And Janet Skinovich, docket number 046958-05. And Donna Freitas, docket number 011149-16, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a litigation position of the committee. Also, national laws, chapter 38, section 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, including Ann Dargan, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education, Michael Loesch, District-wide Special Education Director. Also, national laws, chapter 38, excuse me, section 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the Florida School System, including coaches, Title I teachers, nurses, occupational behavioral and physical therapists, physical therapy assistants, licensed practical nurses, certified occupational therapy assistants, school administrative managers, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Florida Educated Association, as the chair has determined, that an open session may have a detrimental impact on a bargaining position of the committee. The committee would reconvene. They may amend up your statements at that time.
So, the committee's heard the reasons outlined by Attorney Assad for the purpose for executive session this evening. Is there a motion? Motion made by Mr. Agia, it's seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
This committee will stand and recess. I'd like to call the Florida School Committee meeting back to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Coogan.
Here.
Mr. Costa.
Here.
Mr. Hetzler.
Here.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins.
Here.
Mayor Correa.
Is there any other motions?
To make a motion, we approve the contract between the Paraprofessionals Union and the Florida School Committee.
As negotiated?
As negotiated.
Made by Mr. Hetzler. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Agia. Roll call.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Coogan.
Yep.
Mr. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler.
Yes.
Mr. Corey. Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Mayor Correa.
Are there any other motions?
To make a motion, we approve the contract between the Paraprofessionals Union and the Florida School Committee.
As negotiated?
As negotiated.
Made by Mr. Hetzler. Is there a second?
Second.